Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of March 2nd to order. First off, any disclosures of interest?
So, I'd like to declare a conflict of interest on Agenda Item 11A due to my wife's employment.
Great, that will be noted. Counselor Dunstall?
Yes, I'd like to declare a conflict on Item 3A, the closed session matter that you're about to go into. I own a building at 15 Main Street East, which is two doors away. Thank you.
Great, that will be noted. And before we move into closed session, just a little announcement. We started the meeting at 6:30 tonight, just to allow for our open session to hopefully start around 7:00, so there's no inconvenience to anyone that wants to attend in person. Now, we're going to move into closed. A move by Counselor Cadwell, second by Counselor Frake, resolve that council meet in closed session under Section 2392-F of the Municipal Act 2001. Advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, 2123 Main Street East and 6th Door in Ave. All in favor to go into closed? We're into closed. Good evening, everyone. We're back into open session again for our council meeting of Monday, March 2nd, 2020. First up, we have a move by Counselor Vardy, second by Counselor Bothwell, resolve that legal council proceed with direction provided in closed session. All in favor? That's carried. And next up, we have Mr. Colin Chung from Glen Schnar Associates, 308 to 314 Main Street East. Welcome, Colin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. For the record, my name is Colin Chung of Glen Schnar and Associates, Inc. I am the planner for the applicant for a draft plan subdivision at Terrace Drive and Main Street in Grimsby. Last planning committee meeting last week, planning committee members considered the draft plan of subdivision is only by law application for this site. Committee directed staff at that meeting to look at the lots backing onto the existing houses on Lawrence Avenue to be all bungalows. The previous draft plan that we submitted, that was before planning committee last week, had 50% of those lots backing onto the existing houses on Lawrence Avenue as bungalows, another 50% approximately as two-story, single detached dwelling. Planning committee asked staff to look at all of those lots to be bungalows. As part of my delegation request that I made on Friday to town clerk, I did circulate a revised draft plan and subdivision for councils perusal. I'm not sure if you have that in front of you, but I do have extra copies in case. The draft plan that's been revised dated February 27th, which is part of the delegation request that I made on Friday, Mr. Mayor, what that shows now is that all the lots backing onto the existing houses on Lawrence Avenue are all bungalows, as per planning committee's direction to staff. So that you're aware, one of the things that we looked at as part of the revision was, we want to try to minimize the actual proposed housing footprint or lot coverage, so that there's more spaces behind the houses that exist on Lawrence Avenue. So, just for staff purposes, the previous draft plan, Mr. Mayor, had a total building area coverage of 2696 square meters. The current draft plan, the revised draft plan that we submitted on Friday, has a total footprint of 2,374 square meters. So, there's a reduction of approximately 400 square meters. What that means in terms of coverage, so that there's more green space versus built form, the previous draft plan had a total lot coverage, or an average lot coverage, of 44%. The current plan that we have provided to you for today has a lot coverage of 39%. So, that's a reduction, almost 5% in lot coverage. So, what that means, Mr. Mayor, is that there's less built form, more open space on the current plan than the previous draft plan. So, we made some changes as a result of planning committee's request. We also tweaked to minimize the lot coverage, which gives a better relationship in terms of built form to the existing houses that exist on Lawrence Avenue. In my opinion, Mr. Mayor and members of council, we heard loud and clear planning committee last week, and we feel that the plan that's before you today is a much better improvement plan in dealing with the bungalows that the planning committee wishes to have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Questions for the presenter? Counselor Vardy?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Not a question, but a big thank you. I wish all developers were like you and willing to hear the community and, you know, make the kind of adjustments. And this is huge for the people who live on Lawrence, and I'm just so pleased and grateful. So, just want to say thank you very much.
That's so nice to hear, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Counselor Bothwell and Counselor Sharp?
I agree. This developer has worked very hard with the community and looked at ways to try to make it more compatible, especially with the stable neighborhood of Lawrence. Just a quick question, I believe previously there were 15 lots abutting Lawrence, and they were a combination of two-story and bungalows. And I thought that the lot sizes at that time were 50 feet, and I think now they're 45, and you've added two units abutting onto Lawrence. Just want to confirm, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, that is correct. As a result of trying to deal with the coverage and the housing footprint, we've actually made the lots smaller. They're much more, I guess, market-wise affordable for bungalows in Grimsby. And if we're going to do all bungalows backing onto Lawrence Avenue residents, then these are, in terms of actual size of houses, are really, very complimentary to the existing houses that exist. And as a result of making the lots smaller, 45-footers versus 50-footers, there's an increase in the number of units. But as I said before, the actual coverage is actually has reduced. So, there's less GFA of livable space on this current plan, although it's more units than the previous plan.
Thank you. Counselor Vardy? Oh, no, sorry, Counselor Sharp?
Thank you. Through the mayor, to Colin, you said that there was less GFA. Is that only on lots 1 through 17, or is that on other lots too?
Through you too, Mr. Mayor. The calculation that my office had done, are dealing with the lots 2 to, I guess in the previous plan, it would be 2 to 14, which was a focus of the planning committee's discussion. And the calculation as a comparable is same as, basically same area of block. So, it's current plan is Lot 2 to Lot 16, and we calculated only for those lots, because we're dealing with interface with the existing houses on Lawrence Avenue. And the numbers that I provided to you, Mr. Mayor, are only dealing with that string of lots along Terrace Drive backing onto the existing houses on Lawrence Avenue.
Thank you. No further questions. I'll just make a little comment. I'd like to thank you for working with the residents of Lawrence Avenue and planning. Transitions, even though the official plan says a transition zone, a transition from 1960s lots and houses is much different than a transition from 2013. So, I just think, even though it looks the same in writing in OP, it's nice that we have seen that there's willingness to make things better for everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We just need a mover and seconder for this resolution. Counselor Vardy and Counselor Ritchie? Move by Counselor Vardy, second by Counselor Ritchie, resolve that the delegation of Colin Chung, MCIP, RPP Partner, Glen Schnar Associates Incorporated, with reference to 308 to 314 Main Street East, Grimsby, be received. All in favor? That's carried.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of committee.
Up next, we have the delegation of George Chafanovic, concerns regarding the 2020 Town of Grimsby budget. Welcome, George.
Thank you to the chair and council members for allowing me to speak tonight. Please note, this is our for the record, concerns and questions regarding the Town of Grimsby budget and property tax increases. One, in the first year of control, in 2019, the new Town of Grimsby Council with Mayor Jordan has approved to raise taxes by 8.97%. And this year, in 2020, they are proposing a further increase of 16.7%. In the two years of existence for the current elected council under Mayor Jordan, they have raised taxes, including the proposed increase for 2020 by a total of 25.67%. The proposed increase for 2020 alone represents an increase that is greater than the total tax increases subjected to the citizens of Grimsby in the previous 10 years under the earlier councils. From what we can gauge from many citizens in Grimsby, having read the details in the Niagara newspaper and in day-to-day discussions, they are very upset with the new heavy tax and spend antics of the new Town of Grimsby Council. They feel they have been duped in the last election and wish they had their previous fiscally responsible council back. As a taxpayer in the Town of Grimsby, I'm very concerned about these increases. For the record, we would like to underscore this unprecedented and new historical high increases in taxes that will force the most vulnerable residents to leave their houses and apartments, because they will be unable to afford to live on their fixed incomes. Also, no new business will be drawn to the Grimsby, and existing ones will move to more affordable towns. Two, the Town of Grimsby Council is accountable for their actions, and can the residents of Grimsby expect to see more double-digit property increases compounded, taxes on taxes, onto the 25.67% increases inked for the future years? What further tax hikes can residents and businesses of Grimsby expect for the next two years? Three, I have a chart we were going to show, but nonetheless, the following chart shows the breakdown of property taxes per municipality in the region of Niagara for 2019 and 20, as we found in the Google search and local newspapers. Considering that the previous 10 years, the Grimsby tax increases were in the range of 2% per year, the increases in the past two years are very unreasonable. We find it difficult to believe that excuse from the current Town of Grimsby Council that tax increases for 2019 and 20 are a result of mismanagement from the previous councils. Chairperson and council, please provide an explanation on why residents of Grimsby are suddenly being hammered with huge property tax increases by the new Town of Grimsby Council as compared to the neighboring cities and municipalities. Please note that Grimsby taxes are from two up to eight times greater than any of the other towns. And I have a list of the municipalities, and including Hamilton as well, that shows our increase for 2020 as 25.67. That's a proposal, and then it goes, you know, from there, with everybody else having much, much lower tax increases. Four, former Grimsby councillor, Nick DeFlavio, wrote an open letter to Mayor Jordan and ward councillors. The former councillor's letter details are noted in italics below. I mean, we can't really see it, because it's not presented on the screen, but, "Good afternoon, Mayor Jordan and Ward councillors. We are writing to you as taxpayers who pay $20,000 a year in municipal property taxes to express our grave concern over the unbridled spending of the current Town Council. As our reps on Town Council, you have a duty to spend responsibly and to measure every tax increase carefully. It is clear that the proposed budget has no consideration for the taxpayer and a simple rubber stamp of staff requests. Some of our concerns include, point one, a $250,000 budget increase for legal fees. Increasing the levy for these fees suggests that there will be a perpetual cost of $350,000 to taxpayers forever. If you foresee an increase in the upcoming year, the responsible thing to do would be to use reserves. I am certain that there are legal reserves that haven't been used from the past that can be allocated for short-term increases. Chairperson and council, please respond to this comment." New point, four new staff. It appears that there are four new staff members in this budget, and all of them are administrative. My question is, how do these new staff improve service to taxpayers? Chairperson and council, please respond to this question. New point, why are we making contributions to a hospital that hasn't been built yet? Why are we contributing so much to this hospital? In the past, council has indicated that the hospital dementia would come once the shovel was in the ground. That way, those who actually use the hospital will pay for it. Taking money for something that is still in the planning stages and can be canceled at any time is unfair to those who will never use the hospital. Chairperson and council, please respond to this question. New point, $125,000 investment to begin closing the town's infrastructure gap. What gap? We have the best infrastructure in the region, and some of the best in the province. The existing budget was more than adequate to maintain the current levels of spending on infrastructure. Chairperson and council, please respond to this question on exactly what the town's infrastructure gap is and why taxpayers have to foot a bill for $125,000. New point, $250,000 for on-demand transit. I'm trying to understand how members in this council can be both opposed to high-density construction, which is needed to sustain transit, and in favor of transit. A functional transit system in Grimsby will cost upwards of $1 million, and to support that, it can't, it can be done, it cannot be done for less. To believe it can be done for less is either ignorant or an outright lie. Chairperson and council, please respond to this comment. We ask that you please reconsider this budget. And this is Nick DeFlavio's, from his letter. If not for us, for those on a fixed income, whose pensions do not come close to covering such an extreme change to their spending, our greatest fear is that someone who has lived in Grimsby all their lives will no longer be able to afford to live here. Chairperson and council, could you reconsider and reduce the levels in the other municipalities in the Niagara region? The massive increase presented in your budget will leave local businesses and the most vulnerable residents with no option but to leave the community. Point five, further to former councillor Nick DeFlavio's note in his email to the mayor regarding the increase to the town budget. Chairperson and council, we would like a response to the following questions. Why is the town legal budget increasing from $150,000 to $350,000? Why are legal fees increased by over 233% since the new council has been in place? Are these grossly inflated legal fees expected to be perpetual? Furthermore, a new point, on page four of the proposed 2020 budget, note that the slide, "The past decade at a glance, levy trends." It only shows the results from 2010 up to 2018. It does not include the unreasonably gross increases put forward in the past two years by the new council. So, if you just look at that chart, you can see from 2010 to 2018. Next point, on page five of the proposed 2020 budget, note that the slide, "The past decade at a glance, reserves," only shows the reserves from 2010 to 2018, where it shows there is over $10 million in reserves. What is the current level of the reserves? New point, on page 26 of the proposed budget, note that the council, the slide, "Council's strategic priorities," the current council is increasing legal support from $100,000 to $350,000 for active LPAT, formerly OMP appeals. It seems clear the current Grimsby council has a biased agenda to suppress development in the town. Grimsby is not poised to meet the provincial mandate where it is required that the region of Niagara expect the population in the region to double its population by 2041. Grimsby needs to embrace development, not limit it. If we want to reduce the residential tax base, implement public transit, and realize its commitment to meet the projected population and housing needs. New point, in addition to the $250,000 in legal support noted above, there is also an infusion of taxpayer dollars into administration position and for studies. The total expenditure of the legal fees, administration positions, and studies reach almost $1 million. This seems very excessive. Some of the expenses on this wish list should be eliminated. On administration positions, we have a communication resource for $116,000, economic development officer for $95,000, park specialist for almost $80,000, recreational programmer almost $85,000. Also for studies, Grimsby Beach Use Planning Study, $100,000, Irish Grove Woodlot Cultural Heritage Landscape Study, $50,000, Wayfinding Strategy Study, $16,000, parking study for the downtown, $100,000, Main Street East Cultural Heritage Landscape Study, $100,000. In our special report on NPCA operations, the Ontario Auditor General, Bonnie Liasack, raised concerns that a board dominated by municipal politicians may lead to conflicts of interest when it comes to the conservation authority carrying out its core conservation mission. The Town of Grimsby 2020 budget seems to confirm this concern that was raised, and now the Town of Grimsby constituents have to pay. Final point, we would like to know where the funds for the sale of the biodigestor are. The current council turned down $8 million for a 10-year option that the previous board had reviewed. That option would have allowed the town to still own the biodigestor after 10 years. Please tell us, what was the sale price for the biodigestor, and also tell us where the millions of dollars in funds from the sale have been allocated? What is the legal cost to the town to be, to deal with this issue?
Thank you, George. Your time is up. Questions? Counselor Vane?
I'm gathering you're letting me go first, so I can get under the bus first? Thanks. The, I'm sorry, George, I didn't get your last name again.
Try another.
I'll try George. Sorry. A little easier. I just want to ask you a quick question, because as you can appreciate, we've received a lot of emails, a lot of Facebook comments and stuff this week, but, and I had a pretty standard reply that I was sending to a lot of people, and 90% of the responses I got after I sent the reply, and I'm going to read it to you in a moment, is, "Thank you for clarifying." And this is where I think a big part of the problem is, and I'm going to be very clear here, I'm going to throw somebody under the bus, but it's nobody on this council. Our newspapers, our local newspapers, and I don't see the people here, oh, there's one of them. I respect the heck out of those reporters on both of those newspapers, but I don't think they did a proper job of explaining it, in my opinion, my opinion. Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Bothwell, speak.
Okay, you can step outside, sir, if you have a problem listening. This is a council. You have your opportunity to speak later, okay? Thank you. As I was saying, what do you think the total increase on your tax bill is going to be? Based on what you've just told me, what do you believe?
Whatever percent they said.
So, are you paying how much now? 4,000?
Okay, that's personal.
Okay, all right, let's just say hypothetically, you're paying 4,000. So, you're saying, based on what you're saying, your taxes are going to go up $1,000? Is that what you're expecting? It does matter. It's very important. Can we please keep the comments to a minimum?
It's going to eat in on different levels, on different things. Maybe my tax bill won't be $1,000.
No, it won't be. It won't be anywhere near it.
But once they start compounding, because that 25% gets added, and then the next year, the increase, if it's another double-digit figure, will start compounding year after year. So, I don't take this, oh, just because your tax bill isn't going to go up. We don't know what's going to happen after all this frivolous spending, what I consider frivolous spending, to, you know, to take place.
That's fair. All right. I'm going to read you an email that I sent to a lot of people, and this is where I got the thank you for the clarification. Let me start by saying that the budget increase, which we are proposing, is approximately 4.7% of your overall tax bill. So, suddenly, we're not at 25 anymore. What you're getting from the newspapers, and this is where I'm very upset with the newspapers, even though I respect the heck out of these guys, is they told you 16%. That 16% is correct on the town portion of your bill. The town portion makes up 27% of your overall bill. So, your overall bill, based on what the town is proposing, is 4.7%. 50 cents a day, $15 a month, 172 a year. For that, we're going to get transit, which is basically door-to-door for most people, $3. So, you can go from the edge of Grimsby to St. Catherine's for $3. Infrastructure, Mr. DeFlavio, I'm glad that you brought up his letter, because I don't think I would have brought it up personally, but since he did, and he wants to come in here and tell us how wonderful he is, you can thank him for all this development. And this development that everybody thinks is giving us more taxes is costing us more money. There's report after report after report that shows that residential development does not increase taxes. Not, sorry, it does not increase tax input. It costs us more.
Counselor Vane, I think we're starting to get off topic for, really, we're just making, we're making comments.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. No, I have a right to speak, the same as everybody else.
I think we'll talk about this during the, when we debate on the, on approving the budget.
Okay.
I think we can talk about it later.
Well, I disagree. No, it's not a matter of, no, I'm not getting angry, I'm just being honest here. I think we have a right.
Well, I really think that the crosstalk, crosstalk in, during a delegation.
But I want people to understand, I noticed you never replied to any of the emails. I did, so this is what I'm saying.
Well, I didn't copy you, so.
That's right. You didn't respond.
I ruled, and right now, any further questions?
Then I would like to file a formal complaint on the record, okay?
Okay. Counselor Frake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I speak now?
All right. A move by Counsel-
How do you listen to your mayor? Instead of yapping?
Hey.
He's the boss, not you.
Can we please have decorum?
Here's what I've had with you guys up to here. Yeah, whatever, fine. You know what? There's five of you here, and there's one of them I'm extremely disappointed with. And then, you know what, you guys? Take your heads out of your asses.
Chief Thompson?
Do the right thing for Grimsby. See ya. Bye.
Moved by Counselor Sharp, second.
Okay.
All right. Counselor Frake, you'd like to?
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Guess we're all now going to have cool heads, hopefully. I just want to thank George for coming in. I know it's not easy to stand up there and say what you said, and I know the information came from a lot of sources, but I can assure you that some of the things you said were anomalies, and some of them are incorrect, some of them are correct. And you'd be happy to know that we're going to have another session tonight, which is going to specifically speak to most of the items that you've mentioned in your delegation. So, I don't think we should probably get into all of the different things that you've given us, but if you stay around for the night, you will probably see us go through some of those items, and maybe you'll get a better understanding for what we're doing. So, thank you very much for coming in and giving us the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you, George, for your presentation. Moved by Counselor Sharp, second by Counselor Dunstall, resolve that the delegation of George Chafanovic, with reference to concerns about the 2020 Town of Grimsby budget, be received. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have Colleen Allison, the 2020 Town of Grimsby budget. Welcome, Colleen.
Chair and the council members for allowing me to speak today. My name is Colleen Allison, and I'm here to represent my family, who are the owners of the woodlot. We would like to make it known, and we are adamantly opposed to the 2020 budget and our very unreasonably large property tax increase, from what we've been reading and what, you know, I heard the same things, George. We would like to make it known that we are adamantly opposed to the 2020 budget, and we are very, oh, I've said that already, sorry. Two of the Grimsby Town Council's strategic priorities noted in the 20 budgets are park specialist, Slide 27, with a taxpayer investment of $79,730, and in-house resource, including administration for the Irish Grove Woodlot, which is our property. Irish Grove Woodlot Cultural Heritage Landscape Study, Slide 32, with a taxpayer investment of $50,000 for a planning consultant.
Just a clarification, that was already taken off the budget, so that's not on there.
Okay, that is off officially? Because when I inquired about it, it hadn't at that point been?
It was, it's off.
So, it is off?
It's off, so.
Okay. I just want to say that we feel strongly that this is unnecessary, might as well finish off what I'm going to say here, unnecessary. The region of Niagara has already conducted a Livingston Avenue EA, and we are in fully support, we fully support the completion for the extension project. I would like to reiterate, the woodlot is privately owned, and the family does not approve of the fact that the taxpayer money is being used to influence our- of the fact that the taxpayer money is being used to influence our personal and private property. What assurance do we have that reserve funds or taxes from other projects might be misappropriated to fund studies or programs that harm the rights to our private property? Our family feels we are being targeted by this current council. Will property taxes also be allocated to opposing organizations to balance the views of the constituents of the Town of Grimsby? The Town of Grimsby must fund fairly to organizations with an unbiased view. We have already sent a registered letter to the Town of Grimsby that no one is allowed on the property without the written consent from all owners. We would like the Town of Grimsby to respect our privacy. Otherwise, we will seek legal action. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions from council? Thank you for your presentation. Moved by Counselor Frack, second by Counselor Cadwell. Resolve that the delegation of Colleen Allison, with reference to the 2020 Town of Grimsby budget, be received. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, Counselor Sharp has a notice to suspend the rules of procedure. Do we have a seconder for that? Counselor Frack, seconding? I'll read it.
I'll read it.
Moved by Counselor Sharp, second by Counselor Frack. Resolve that the rules of procedure be suspended in regards to Section 410A, Bylaw 7-81, to govern the proceedings of council, local board, and committee meetings. This is actually to vote for an open mic. We need two-thirds. All in favor? I'd like a recorded vote as well, so. Counselor Bothwell?
Sorry, I just have, so I made this resolution. This, this resolution to suspend the rules of our normal procedure is to allow people to speak at this meeting right now. And the vote that we're having right now is, is whether we'll suspend the rules, because our procedure doesn't allow people to speak without being a delegation, and we want people to be able to come up and speak, so we're going to suspend the rules.
So I'm
I've read the resolution. I'll read it again. Counselor Ritchie?
Is there a time limit on how
Yes, we've We'll vote on it first, but we, if it's successful to, to suspend the rules, we're allowing two minutes a person. Counselor Ritchie?
Can I ask, I'll ask, how long, I appreciate two minutes a person, but for how long?
We have seven people signed up, so we're trying, trying to keep it at the 15-minute mark. With people coming to and from the podium, it may run a little bit longer than that, but the two minutes a person should be adequate to discuss the budget items. Counselor Bothwell?
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall? Counselor Frack?
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp? Counselor Vane? Counselor Vardy?
Yay.
And myself, I'm a yay. So the rules of procedure are carried. And Counselor Sharp, would you like to move this one, it's just about putting the speakers on? Yeah. Moved by Counselor Sharp, second by Counselor Frack. Resolve that council allow additional delegations from seven delegates with a maximum two-minute limit each, and no repetition of statements if possible. All in favor? That's carried unanimously.
Excuse me.
Counselor Sharp?
Can I just get some clarification that we're going to allow people to come up and speak to the, to the budget items, and not to council's performance, or the previous council's performance, or the general economic principles? There's about 20 items or 21 items on our budget list, and two minutes, can we just clarify that this is not a, a chance to get up and just call names, please, if everyone can respect that?
Yes, I think that's been noted, and it is speaking on the budget items. First up is Joanne Johnston. Welcome, Joanne.
Okay, thank you. Hi, I'm, my name is Joanne Johnston. I am a concerned citizen. So most of us received this piece of paper with budget items, okay? This is my concern, and many concerns of my fellow residents here in Grimsby, that I look after quite a few seniors. And they live here, they've raised their family, and they still want to live here. With a budget like this, and on a, and on a, an income that is basically very, very restricted, they cannot live here anymore. And as, as for myself, I mean, my two daughters had to move out of town because they could not live here anymore, they could not afford to live here anymore. And that's sad, because that's why we moved here. But I'm looking at this budget, and you're giving me, you're giving us all, let me take my glasses off, 16.49%, and that's exactly what it says on this sheet. We got, received this from David Sharp. So this is, this was given to us by David Sharp, also on Facebook. So if anybody wants to look at that, they can just go to Facebook and look at it. And this is the increases. Now, this is my concern, and I'm going to bring up that I was on council, and as, as a council member, every year for budget time, we got every, every committee department head came before us and gave their wish list. I see nothing in here. I see, nothing is broken up here, so what you're seeing here is not a wish list, this is, this is like a consolidated wish list. And I'm thinking to myself, I see the base budget increase of $275,000. What is that? Like, I don't see any fire department here, I don't see Public Works, and they are a hefty budget, because they run our, they run our town, they're very, and the fire department. I'm not seeing anything here. I'm seeing, for instance, the wayfinding study.
Counsel
Yes? No, sorry.
Could you just wrap it up? Your time is up.
Okay, so I'm just saying that what you should be doing is going back to the table, getting all your department heads, and give the wish lists as what they, what they want. Not, don't go to the committees. The committees, half of them, they, they'll just give whatever they want to give. But it's the committee directors that have to do their diligent homework on the budget, and present it to you as council. And that's what I'm saying. Thank
Thank you, Joanne. Up next, we have Chris Jack. Okay, all right. Next, we have Gary McClure. Gary McClure. Welcome, Gary.
Thank you, sir. Been resident of Grimsby for 40 years, reside in Ward 4. I'll shout. The majority of my concerns have been covered by the eloquent speakers that went before me. What's left of, that's on my mind. And one of the counselors alluded to what it was going to cost, but I'd like to make reference to a, a chart that was provided yesterday, that I had a chance to read today from one of my own counselors, whose integrity is beyond reproach, so I believe the numbers. From Service Canada, yes, Dave, from Service Canada, my Canada pension went up $21 since July of last year, as of January 1st. They also reported that, you know, write that down, they also reported that my old-age security went up $6. Easy math, that's $27. According to the chart that I previously mentioned from my councilperson, based on the taxes that I paid last year, my taxes will go up $27. You have effectively increased my tax rate by 128% in relation to my increases from Canada pension and old-age security. You did not, none of you. None of you campaigned on that. You represented yourself as being conservatives, as being watchdogs of the public purse. You're not, if you pass this budget. Second issue, and I know I've got just a few seconds left, anyone who spends any amount of time reading paper and making themselves aware across this country of the political and legal issues, has to be aware, and hopefully including this group, of what the parliaments have been going through and what the courts have told them. Trans Mountain was kicked back to the federal government by the Supreme Court because of lack of consultation. That has been happened on various levels in all the provinces. Consultation. This issue, before us now, there's been no consultation. I heard about it by rumor last Wednesday, read about it in the local paper Thursday, four days later, they're making a vote, or considering making a vote. Where's the consultation?
Thank you for your presentation. Up next, we have Janice Gujalek. Welcome, Janice. Just for clarification, when it gets to the two minutes, I will lift my hand up, just to, no, to wrap it up, all right?
I'm at a meeting, and I have lived here 38 years, and my biggest concern is for the livability of the people in Grimsby, that they have the income to afford to live here. After 38 years, I don't want to, in 10, 15 years, have to have the concern that my taxes, once I'm on a fixed income, that I won't be able to live in this beautiful town with these beautiful people. Even to afford a home here for young people, $600,000 for a starter home, and my own children at this point can't live in Grimsby. And even if it's a small amount that goes up when you are living on a fixed income, or you are a young family starting out, just look hard at the amount of money you are spending on hiring new people to come to the, to the town to, to do the recreation or, or whatever you're hiring. Take a good look, and think of families and children and grandparents, that your own parents or, or loved ones, that you wouldn't want them thinking, oh, I got this much more money in tax, maybe I'll have to give up this much more money for us to have some special dinners out, or anything that would, would affect their lives. Grimsby is a beautiful town, and I just wouldn't want to see people forced out, and that's just really what I wanted to express tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Up next, we have Catherine Gonson. Catherine Gonson has passed. David Altum? Welcome, David.
Thank you, Mayor and council, and fellow constituents of Grimsby taxpayers. A lot of my points are already covered previously. The speakers, I might reiterate about the, the amount of information was basically I received through the local paper. So, Councilman Ward 3, you can say whatever you want about that negatively. I think that's all we have, and that's probably why a lot of us are here. And, and thank, thank for that, thank you so much for that, the newspaper, and to give us that info, so we can address this, these concerns. Okay, and my main, my main concern here is about the transit. As I was at a meeting, I would say approximately four or five years ago, and there was a survey done then, and I had looked, prused it from cover to cover, and with many questions and concerns. And I wondered what happened, that now there seems to be some urgency about this, which seems to be a, a, a important part of this tax bill for Grimsby. Now, I understand that I, I came to the town hall, and I was speaking to a lady there in regards to the gold train. Is this gold train going in for sure? And even if you say that, my, my concern there is, is the government, actually, if there's funding there, are they, or can you trust them? Because I've seen a lot of things promised through the government, and it never came through. And as far as, okay, one more question, as far as this transit goes, this public transit here, right? Is there funding coming forth from the government? Because this one-quarter million dollars, you'd be lucky if you get, you could afford a bus with that money for the first year. Okay? And I have one other little cop, one other little thing in regards to the, the tax bill. Like, this here doesn't show your water, our water, wastewater. And with all this new condos going in there, I heard rumor that they want
Water, wastewater is a regional issue, and that's on the regional
All right. Well, we can look, probably look forward to an increase there, because I heard they, they said they have the room to add on there, at the wastewater treatment
I've been, I've been very fair with you.
Yes, okay, I understand.
I did tell you when your two minutes were
I had a lot of questions, so that's
You've had about 30 seconds extra. Up next, we have, thank you, David. Up next, we have Lisa Sesnick. Lisa Sesnick? Yeah, that's something that's not on topic for right now, unfortunately, but Yes, we welcome delegations. Just a note for everyone, delegations are welcome to attend. You just need to, to sign in on the Friday by noon before the council meeting, whether it's on a Monday or Tuesday, depending if there's a holiday. But if you can get in Friday by noon, we'll accommodate everyone who wants to have their 10 minutes. Thank you. Counselor Cadwell, would you like to move this one? And Counselor Frack, second? Just to receive the delegations. Moved by Counselor Cadwell, second by Counselor Frack. Resolve that all additional delegations be received. All in favor? That's carried. Adoption of the previous council minutes, we just need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Ritchie and Counselor Vane. Moved by Counselor Ritchie, second by Counselor Vane. Resolve that the council meeting minutes of the February 18th, 2020, and the special council meeting minutes of February 24th, 2020, be approved. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have Report 2002, Legal Services RFP. Welcome, Philip.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. I know I'm holding you up from an important budget discussion, so I'll be as quick as I can. Thank you for time on your agenda tonight. The report before you speaks to the provisioning of legal services for the Town of Grimsby and Town of Lincoln. It was a joint RFP issued by the Town of Grimsby and Town of Lincoln in November, November 8th, 2019. The RFP itself was a customized version of a legal services RFP used by many municipalities in Ontario. It was posted on our website, again, in November. It was posted on our website, again, in November, and on our website and our bids and tenders portal, and it was out there for four weeks. The two municipalities received 17 bids from legal firms from across the province. The 17 bids were scored by panel from the Town of Grimsby and Town of Lincoln, which consisted of myself, our town clerk, and the Town of Lincoln town clerk. We shortlisted those 17 bids into five. The leading proponents were invited to present to the towns jointly. That joint evaluation team consisted of myself, the town clerk, our CAO, and a CAO from the Town of Lincoln, their clerk, and their Associate Director of Planning. Also present was our Acting Fire Chief, and our Treasurer attended a portion of the meeting. At which point, the top three legal firms were invited to submit their best and final price for a common joint award. So, where both municipalities awarded to the same firm. And I'm happy to report that we got better pricing that was offered to both municipalities. And when I say better pricing, I mean on hourly rates. So, when we told the leading firm that they were going to receive a common award pending council's approval, they further reduced their hourly rates for some of their lawyers. With council's approval of staff's recommendation tonight, we will be working over the coming weeks to transition any appropriate legal files to the new firm. Again, where appropriate, not necessarily appropriate if the file has been delved into by another firm, it's currently in progress. So, our recommendation, as per the report, is to award the legal services contract to Erdan Berlis LLP. I'd like to thank the Town of Lincoln staff who helped us over the last number of months in all their work. I'd like to congratulate the Town of Lincoln on their award to Erdan Berlis. And also, I'd like to thank the Town of Grimsby staff who helped me in putting all this work together and I'm able to bring it to you tonight. So, thanks to them. I'll take any questions from council.
Thank you for your presentation, Philip. It's a great example of the two municipalities working together for cost savings by combining legal services. Any questions? Counselor Frick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Philip, we may have asked you this question before, but in the light of, we have a lot of people here tonight listening, the, this particular RFP or this legal contract, once it goes in place, will cover both, will be a partner with Lincoln. Is that right?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, is a common award under separate contracts. The Town of Grimsby would have its own legal service contract with the recommended proponent. The Town of Lincoln has their own. So, it's separate contracts, but a common award.
Okay. Second question, roughly when do you think they'll start their legal service with the town? And I may as well ask you the second piece, too. In light of the questions and concerns about our legal bill coming up in our budget, hopefully we can see some reductions by using this new council. Go ahead and answer the first question. Thanks.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counselor. When do they start? As I've outlined in the report, I don't have a specific start date. I do have a little bit on the transition. We need to plan for it. So, we know that there's a number of legal cases already, illegal files already in progress. We have to plan what's appropriate for transition and what isn't. I don't have a firm start date for you. I can report back on that. We do have a plan to meet with the leading proponents, should council approve the award tonight, meet with them and plan out the transition as appropriate. I would look to start as soon as we can. Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. Counselor Sharp?
Yes, thank you. Through the mayor, Philip, what is the name of the firm that you're recommending? Erdan-
Through you, Chair. The name of the firm is Erdan Berlis LLP. They're a firm out of Toronto. They have municipal experience-
Can you say it just a little slower?
Erd, A-I-R-D, and Berlis, B-E-R-L-I-S.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Through you to Philip. Great work. It's a great initiative, and it's a good sign to the province that we're looking to work with shared, doing shared services with municipalities. And that's, was part of the whole governance that was, that was put, the information and the whole process back a little while ago. That's what they're looking for. So, I'm excited about this. I think it's great. It's going to benefit both communities. So, thank you for your work, and thank you for staff, and again, Lincoln, too. Great work. I'm sure the province would be quite impressed. Thank you.
Sorry, any further questions? Seeing none, moved by Counselor Cadwell, second by Counselor Frick. Result that Report CORP 2002, Legal Services Request for Proposals, dated March 2nd, 2020, be received, and that the mayor and the town clerk be authorized to enter into an agreement with Erdan Berlis LLP as primary legal counsel for the corporation of the Town of Grimsby for a period of four years be approved. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have Report PO 20-4, Implementation Administrative Monetary Penalty System to Promote Compliance. Kathy Hutchinson and Fire Chief Thompson, welcome.
Good evening. Mayor and members of council, we're here just to update you on the implementation of this new tool to promote compliance with designated bylaws. The Administrative Monetary Penalty System, or otherwise known as AAMS, will be used in conjunction with other enforcement tools that are at our disposal. And as directed, the Bylaw Department is now prepared to complete the final steps to bring this initiative into fruition. As shown in the report, we have utilized existing software and created a comprehensive process for the use of the system. Next will be the public advisory to provide a clear and accessible language to update our constituents on this new process. The system, as created by the provincial government and amendments to the Municipal Act and the Building Code Act, will allow for a direct and efficient notice of noncompliance of bylaws. And this system will provide for cost recovery of administration of bylaws and enforcement, can be used in conjunction with our fees and charges bylaw, and is an alternative to laying of information for provincial offenses. We anticipate, sorry, we anticipate being fully operational in providing this responsive service by May 2020.
Your worship, council. I just want to commend Kathy and her work towards this. This has been an initiative that's been ongoing for over a year and a half, two years. And there's going to be many fire bylaws that will be incorporated in AAMS. The Towns of Pallam, Wayne Fleet, they're all involved in the AAMS. Canadian Border Services, they use AAMS program. Highway Traffic Act uses AAMS. So, it's a, it's a good non-deterrent. It helps everybody on the same playing field, on the same level. And it's a very good program, and I want to congratulate Kathy again.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Cadwell?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Jordan, and through you to the presenters. I'd like to, to the chief in particular. In the past, I know there's always been difficulty trying to get revenues back from when the, when GFD responds on the QEW. Is this a tool to assist us to get more, to recover, sorry, recover revenue from calls where the fire department's dispatched? Thank you.
Through you, Mayor. Counselor Cadwell, it actually doesn't. The Ontario Fire Chiefs Association signed an agreement for the province, and we've agreed to that in Grimsby, that we collect the fees agreed by the MTO. So, it's per apparatus, and the set fee they give us every year, and it's inflated every year to the inflationary.
Counselor Cadwell? Further questions?
Yeah, thanks for the clarification, and thank you, Mayor Jordan. I know in the past, I understand the rates in that, chief, but it's been very difficult over some years to collect for certain calls. So, does this help us at all in any way? Just clarification. Thank you.
Through you, Mayor. This, on the portion of the QEW, will not assist us. We try not to collect information that's private from a citizen. If we get a police number, then we're fortunate enough, we can go through that to receive it.
Thank you, chief. Counselor Frick, and then Counselor Bothwell?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Kathy. Good job. Command you, chief. Always looking at the numbers. I noted that your revenue collection in 2016 was $14,373, and it's steadily increased up to $59,000 in 2019. Can you elaborate a little bit on how that went so high? I mean, is there, what are you doing? That's great. Maybe it'll help us with the budget.
Through you, Mayor. What you're referring to is the initial use of AAMS that was brought in for parking enforcement. And in 2016, we were still underneath the Provincial Offenses Act, and that was what the revenue was in 2016. In 2017, we rolled out our AAMS, and that's an administration that's done wholly within the town. We're no longer using the Provincial Offenses Court to review or screen these processes. It's all now done in-house. And that's one of the parts that's best about AAMS is that it's our work that we now can recoup the cost on the administration of.
So, follow up. So, we're not sharing the money anymore, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
We're keeping it all for ourselves? Okay.
Yes, it promotes the administration, yes.
Okay. Keep doing it. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Bothwell?
Thanks. That answered some of my questions. Just have one more for you, Kathy. So, the fines are set, the AMP fines are a different rate than the POA fines, and they're set lower. So, how this impacts one of our residents who gets a parking ticket, they're actually, it's, they're not being charged more for the parking ticket, they're actually less than the POA charge. Is that correct? And then, because we're doing it in-house, how does that impact our staff resources? Just wondering about whether we have the resources available to manage the administrative rule.
This is administration or monetary for compliance. So, it's to promote compliance. And one of the requirements in the amendments to the Municipal Act and the Building Code Act are that they are not punitive. So, it is not a fine. It is a promote, it's a tool to promote compliance. So, a POA set fine that's set by a judge would go through the Provincial Offenses Court still, and we still have that avenue, if that's what we would like to do. AAMS allows us to promote the compliance with the bylaw, and all of that is administered in-house. We currently use a software called Ticket Tracer, which is what we use for our parking offenses. And we have been able to utilize that same software to import all our offenses for the designated bylaws, which are done through the AAMS bylaw itself. So, you would have to have a designated bylaw, and then that could be used for the AAMS process.
Just to clarify, so the cost of a parking ticket, is it less under AAMS than a POA parking ticket?
No. Parking tickets are set fines, but this is a completely separate scenario. So, no, this is, parking is parking, and AAMS to promote compliance is something else completely.
Thank you very much for your presentation, seeing no further questions. Phil and Kathy, thank you very much again. Moved by Counselor Sharp, second by Counselor Dunstall. Result that Report PA 20-04, Regarding Implementation of Administrative Monetary Penalty System, AAMS, to Promote Compliance Municipal Bylaws As Defined Under 2018-86 Be Received. All in favor? That's carried. Welcome, Stephen, the 2020 budget presentation. Stephen Gruninger.
Thank you. I'm just going to provide a summary of the committee, the whole budget meeting that occurred on February 18th. So, first off, I want to reiterate the value that this budget provides to the residents of Grimsby. For $172 a year on the town portion of the levy, the community will receive a number of benefits. For one, there'll be investment towards a new hospital that has been long overdue. We have a public transit system. We'll have some additional resources at Town Hall to better get our message out in terms of a communication resource, an economic development resource that can help us retain the business and potentially add new business into the Town of Grimsby. Better winter control operations. We've been running close to some deficits over the years, so we add more funds into our winter control operation. So, these are a number of benefits that this new, this budget will provide. So, if, again, look back roughly over the last decade, we can see that the town average levy was 2.1%. The region's average levy was 1.28, for a combined increase in the average levy over that period of time of 1.25%. The average rate of inflation over that time was 1.7%. So, you can see that the average combined levy was about half a point less than the rate of inflation. Excuse me for a second. Sorry, I'm just getting over a cold, so. So, affordability, even if all the increases that were presented at the, at the February 18th budget were included, per $100,000 of assessment, Grimsby is still the second lowest tax in the Naga region. From Port Coburn, a high of $861 per $100,000 of assessment, down to Naga and Lake at $219. Grimsby comes in at $285, which is $533 still below the average property tax in the Naga The bill. So, we adjusted, council adjusted the requests that came in from February 18th. Initially, the initial request came in at 18, approximately 18.5%. That was brought down to 16.7%. So, on the average residential home of about $444,000, it'll represent a tax bill of about $4,500. Of that $4,500, the Town of Grimsby portion is about $1,246, or only 28% of the overall tax bill. Residents in Grimsby pay more than twice as much to the Naga region than they do to the Town of Grimsby. And then there's about $680 to the school boards. So, the Grimsby portion in the chart, 16.7% are levy increase, which results in an overall tax bill impact of about 4.7%, which converts into $172 on the Grimsby portion of the bill. The region and I agree, even though their levy impact of 5.92% is much lower than ours, they, the portion going to the region is still more than the Town of Grimsby's. Results in an overall increase on the tax bill of $352 on that average, on that average home. So, here's just a summary of all the items that were presented at the committee, the whole meeting. So, we have a base budget, overall tax bill impact of 0.62%. Hospital levy will increase the tax bill by about half a point. An infrastructure levy, an increase of 0.3%. Then we looked at council's strategic priorities. So, there are a number of items that, after council's strategic priority setting, that all of those items relate to their new priorities. That amounts to about 2.54% in the overall tax bill, coming down, right down to the bottom. So, there is the 4.68 on the overall tax bill. So, that's basically the end of the presentation, the summary. So, is there any questions?
I think at this point, it would be questions and clarification. So, we will discuss the, we'll actually, when we approve the council minutes of the budget committee as a whole, that's when we will have discussion on those minutes. Counselor Bothwell?
I don't know if it's appropriate to ask, just for the base budget, is there, because it came up as one of the questions from the delegation, can you give an overview of how the base budget was reviewed and arrived at? Because standing committees didn't have any input into that, and I just wondered if it would be helpful to clarify how the base budget discussions took place.
Yes, I think that would be an excellent clarification. Stephen?
Yeah. So, the base budget for 2020 is basically the 2019 budget brought forward into 2020 with an inflationary increase. into 2020 with an inflationary increase. Inflation year-over-year to December was 2.2%, exactly what our base budget ended out, coming out to be. Also, within that base budget, not only was inflation included in there, there was also some extra positions that were included, which were absorbed. We also have a payroll impact in 2020 of about $400,000, which half of that was absorbed within that, within that base budget. $200,000 represents almost 2% on the levy.
Just a clarification there, that was because there was one extra pay period?
One extra pay period, yes. And there's 27 pay periods for the town in 2020.
And all directors were consulted, and you sat down in-depth and went over line by line with the budgets with them?
Yes. We met. We had some very good discussions. We went off-site. We met as a group. We hashed through the budget. Our intent was to keep that base down as low as we could, knowing that council passed its strategic priorities and had a number of priorities they wanted to accomplish in 2020. So, in order to get some of these priorities accomplished, we knew it was imperative that that base budget be kept at a minimum.
Counselor Ritchie?
Thank you. To the chair. I just wanted to have you confirm or to clarify the extra pay period. It's not that we're handing out an extra paycheck, per se, that they didn't earn, that, but when, correct me if I'm wrong, when you're on a bi-weekly pay period, every 11th year, there will be an additional pay. So, every year, from year 1 to 10, there's 26 pays, and in the 11th year, because of the number of days and leap years, there'd be 27 pays. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah. If you take 26 pay periods, times the five, you actually come to 360, 364, which, there's 365 days in a year, plus every four years, there's a leap year. So, that adds up over 11 years to an extra pay period. So, yes, actually, there will be an extra check that will be, that will be paid out. And that's for any business. For Grimsby, it happens this year. I think for, I know, I was talking with another municipality, it happened for them last year. It just depends on which week your pay falls.
Thank you. Seeing no further. Oh, Counselor Dunstall.
Just for, thank you, Your Worship God. Just for clarification for the audience, you put this together, and then you, what was the next steps, just through the process, once you put this together? I guess what I'm saying is, it just didn't appear last week to us. And you had, there was other things that happened. Could you clarify that for us, for the audience?
Yeah.
For some people, they didn't know about it, and all, the first thing they found out about it was in the newspaper. But there was other steps that you took.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, staff met, you know, a number of times to put the budget together. It came together over a few months. It was then brought to a Budget Committee of the Whole meeting, which was an open public meeting. And then, council debated the budget at that meeting. And then, it was, yes, the budget was also posted online, sorry, for, I believe it was a two-to-three week period, which we really received very few comments on that. No, but that was the survey. We also did a, we posted a survey online, which we received 200 respondents to the survey. So, the budget has been out there and been made publicly available before this, before our Committee of the Whole budget meeting for about, about three weeks.
Thank you, Stephen. Seeing no further questions. Moved by Counselor Vane, seconded by Counselor Bothwell. Resolve that the 2020 Town of Grimsby budget presentation be received. All in favor? Let's carry it. All right. We need a mover and seconder for the Budget Committee of the Whole, but first, we're going to have discussion before we approve this. And up first, who would like to start? Counselor Frake?
I'd like to lift the base budget for.
All right. What line number is that? All right, you have the resolution. Moved by Counselor Frake and seconded by Counselor, any other? Counselor Cadwell? Moved by Counselor Frake, seconded by Counselor Cadwell. Resolve that Resolution Number C 20-63 be lifted from the Budget Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of February 18th, 2020 for separate consideration. All in favor? Let's carry it. Discussion? Counselor Frake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a specific reason why I wanted to lift that portion of the budget. Before I do, though, can I just, can I just read a, read something? I have some notes I put together. If that's okay?
Yeah.
Based on the budget as a whole.
All right. I'll let this.
Is it okay?
Yeah, it's an unorthodox meeting tonight, so, to say the least.
Okay. This is to our fellow counselors and staff, and just for people in the audience in general. We have, we're obviously taking this budget very seriously. I mean, we're not, I don't want anyone to think anything otherwise. And we have been through a lot of pains, both as staff and council, trying to get through this, to get it to the right level where we want it to be. I just put a few words together that I want to read out and for everybody's benefit. There's an old saying, and, which says, Rome wasn't built in a day. The meaning of that phrase is quite simple. It takes time and patience to build something great, not in one year. We cannot and should not try to complete all of our strategic priorities in one year. And that's what we're trying to do with this budget. For the record, our strategic priorities are spread across three years. Yes, it's probably a dream budget. It's great, but that, this isn't a dream. This is reality, and we have to proceed with our fiduciary care and good planning, and we have to listen to our shareholders, the taxpayers and the voters of Grimsby, the people who trusted us with their votes. We just cannot ignore or dismiss them, and thank you for coming out. But just like most of you around council here, I've been approached by many people directly and indirectly. I've received a mountain of emails, texts, phone calls from residents, as well as business owners. And some of them were pretty nasty. I'm sure that all of us around this council table have also been contacted in one form or another. You can dismiss these people if you like, but you cannot ignore their pleas to us, their elected officials. We are obliged to listen, but we are also committed by oath to take action. In this town, we have many retired residents, people living on pensions, people on fixed incomes, families with children, single parents, low-salary people, single breadwinners, unemployed, and young people. All are trying to make ends meet financially. And yes, there are many others in Grimsby who are financially just okay. They may not complain, but they certainly don't agree with this tax increase. And they won't forget. We may not appreciate the negative cost effects on their lifestyles, and that's why we have to listen to the few people who represent those who are silent. Let's never, ever underestimate the silent majority. They won't complain publicly, but they have long memories. Most of us on this council are serving our first term, but we are very much aware of the mismanagement of our town's finances over the last many years. There were years of zero increase or discounted increases, and other years of minimal tax increases, as Counselor Cavill can attest to. There's lots to learn, and there's lots to do, but please, let's not attempt to do everything in one year. Let's back off in some of, let's back off on some of these tax increases and reconsider them next year, or possibly the following year. Not only will our residential property owners be affected, but also all of our business owners. I've heard from a number of business owners, both retail and commercial and industrial, and for the first time, they are concerned about rising costs, which will affect their market, as these costs need to be passed on to their customers. We are trying to encourage retention of local businesses, and this tax increase may not be as good, a good sign. One business owner actually told me he was considering relocating, and that's no lie. This tax increase may not start a war or revolution in Grimsby, but just as a reminder of some history lessons, both the French Revolution and the American Revolution resulted from tax levies. So, like some of you, I've asked to lift a number of items on this budget, and one of them is the base budget line item. Fine, let me finish by saying to all of our council members that this community belongs to our taxpayers, and we are the elected representatives. We don't take the time to heed what they are saying, then we don't deserve their votes or their trust. I hope we can mutually agree on a fair and revised budget tonight. That's my statement. And a follow-up to that, to show that my heart's in the right place, I'm going to recommend to this council that we take a pay reduction, reduction in our salaries, to show the community that we're serious about this. And I have, I have a, I have a resolution here, which I'm going to pass to the clerk, to be read.
Yes, we have, we have this motion moved by Counselor Frake. Do we have a seconder? Counselor Vardy?
A group of two.
Counselor Bothwell, clarification?
Can, I suspect I'm going to support the motion, but in the meantime, can we defer it until the end of the rest of the budget discussion and still entertain it, and then we can see whether there's, there's, I still think it's worthy of bringing forward, but I think maybe postponing it until the end of the rest of the items.
How does the mover and seconder feel about that? Okay, they'd like it now. Counselor Dunstall, now? Yep, it's on the floor now, so I think we've had enough changes tonight. We'll move forward. So, I'll read the resolution. Yep, recorded vote's been called for. Resolve, moved by Counselor Frake, seconded by Counselor Vardy. Resolve that Resolution C 20-63, of the Budget Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of February 18th, 2020, be amended to read. Whereas the proposed 2020 budget submission, pre-approved by council on the 18th of February 2020, represents a 16.7% increase to the town. So, as a good gesture of council's commitment to the taxpayers of Grimsby, council, they should agree to a similar or bigger percentage cut in salary. And whereas the mayor and council elected by the taxpayers of Grimsby are fiscally and morally accountable to consider all aspects of the budgetary issues and concerns of our electorate, based on our fiduciary duty, and also based on numerous requests from Grimsby residents, business owners, and taxpayers pleading for a concentrated effort by council to reduce the budget and the tax levy. And whereas the mayor and council are responsible to ensure the taxpayers are offered a fair, reasonable, equitable, and affordable budget and tax levy for all members of the community at all income levels, and it is very responsible and prudent for council to offer a 16% to 20% cut in salaries, which be factored into the budget. Therefore, be it resolved that currently, the total budget cost of council salary criteria is circa 220,000, which represents about 2% of the town's portion, and about 0.5% of the tax levy, that all council take a 20% pay cut, which represents about $44,000, and about 0.3% of town portion, and 0.1% of tax levy. Discussion?
Yeah, please.
Counselor Sharp?
And through the mayor, and to the people sitting here and the people watching out there on the, on the livestream. This is grandstanding on the part of Counselor Frake. He's done it a few times before. It's not appropriate. It's, it's an intent to make all of us look bad by producing and.
Yeah, I, I think there's a point of order on that. I, I think you're getting.
What is your point? This is my opinion that I'm sharing, is that he's grandstanding, and I don't think that this, and I won't support it. It's, it's his.
Thank you, Counselor Sharp. Counselor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. This one, this is the first I've, even through our Committee of the Whole, we had no discussion on the reduction in, in our salary at all. So, I'd like to, if we, if there is a reduction to our salary, where does that put us with other, other municipality counselors, their salaries too? I've got a few questions on this, too.
Thank you, Counselor Cadwell. I don't think, I don't know, maybe Counselor Frake has figured out the reduction? If, where we would sit with other municipalities? I don't know if you.
I have no idea. And for the record, I'm not grandstanding. I'm very serious. So, I just want to clarify that right now. I don't know what other municipalities pay their, pay their counselors. I was only thinking about this council and this town. And I was willing to give back something to show that I am serious about this job, and that I would, I would like to see us cut something off these taxes. And I'll put my money where my mouth is, and that's, you call that grandstanding, that's fine, but it's not. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just a question. I don't believe we have any lawyers in the room. I question as to whether if we pass this, that we're suddenly doing, oh, what's it called, constructive dismissal, in which case this town could be on the hook for a lot of monies. Just something to keep in mind. So, I don't support it, and I won't support it. I don't, like, the 20 cents or something we're going to save with it, I'm not going to support. But anyways, that's just my opinion.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Vane. Counselor Bothwell?
When you asked about where we are with regards to other municipalities, we recently undertook a review, a salary view, which a couple of counselors at this table asked that it be undertaken to see whether we were paid adequately or not. And that report, from what I recall, indicated that we are substantially over the median of the municipalities within the region of Niagara. In fact, I believe it was close to 20% higher. So, there isn't an issue of whether or not we are being adequately reimbursed for, or according to other municipalities, we were on that report, and it's full, it's online, it's publicly available. I can't remember if it was the last council meeting or the one prior, but that full report is in there, and it clearly shows where the median is, and that counselors for the town of Grimsby are above that median by, I believe it was over 20%.
Thank you, Counselor Bothwell. Counselor Dunstall?
I can remember that report, too. Thank you, Your Worship. Could, it was a staff report, I believe, was it not? I was wondering if the staff could clarify that, if it was 20%, because I don't, I don't recollect the 20%.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the appropriate staff's here right now. I don't think so. Counselor Vardy?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Nobody loves to entertain a pay cut. And, you know, I honestly feel I work pretty hard for, for my money, but at the same time, there are some things in here that I think are really, really important, and we have to do. And there's a lot of things in here that I think we can put off. And I'm, I'm willing to make that cut as a way of showing my commitment to getting a more balanced kind of budget and things that are fair to the community. And I keep going back to my 92-year-old mother-in-law, who lives in her own home. She lives off OAS, GIS. I don't know how she does it, because she budgets way better than me, but we have to protect these people. And I think this is, this is not grandstanding. This is a way that we can show our commitment. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vardy. Does anyone, any other counselor want the first round? Counselor Cadwell?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. In fairness to the budget process, to all council members at the table here, I feel that this motion should be discussed after we review the budget, because we may be able to get some substantial reductions down, and then at that time, that's when we should review the motion, not now. And then at that time, that's when we should review the motion, not now. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Cadwell. Just a clarification from the clerk. We are actually just under 10% over the average. So that's where we stand. Council Ritchie?
You said just below 10% of the average? Or we're within...
Oh, I guess we're within 10%.
Of the average?
Of the average, yes.
Just, so I remember this report. Sorry, can I have the floor?
Council, Council Sharp?
So this report, it was 10% within the median. And if you guys remember math class, like there's a mean, median, and mode. Mean is the average. Median is the 50th percentile. That's where, like, so there can be, it's different than the average, right? And then the mode is the one that occurs most frequently. All right, so this, 10% over the median, so the 50th percentile. So the average was actually a little higher than the median. All right, so we're not far off from our comparative councils. They're not even salaries. We're not employees of the town. We don't pay EI. We are a, it's considered like an honoraria. Like it's, and so we, I also want to say, after taxes, I get about like $450 every two weeks from the town. All right, and it's, we're not, excuse me. Mayor, could you ask people from the floor to...
If we could keep the comments, non decorum comments from the gallery to a minimum, please. Everyone does deserve respect. Thank you.
So I'm not overpaid to do this job. I put 20, 30 hours a week into, I'm reading 250-page reports, and I'm printing on my own at home, and I'm taking time. I'm driving to and from here. I come out to meet you guys. I pay my cellphone bills and the data. And like, I'm spending, like, an exorbitant amount of time to do this. And I love to do it. I love to, excuse me, point of order?
Yeah, we just have to have decorum. Catcalling is just unacceptable.
So I love to do this. I've been coming to town council meetings since 2016. Like, before I got paid at all, I came, I wrote notes. You know, I went to everything that I could. I like doing this, and I'm doing a good job for the people that... I grew up in this town. I mean, I'm looking around the room at people like, these are my parents' friends, and I went to school with your kids. Like, we're not, I'm not like trying to take from the town. And this budget, which we're going to get to and I'm going to talk about, like, I am not here to take, we're not arbitrarily adding money to take from you. Like, it's, the residents asked for things. They said, we want transit, we want a hospital, we want... You can't interrupt. You can only interrupt for point of order, point of privilege, or point of inquiry.
You have to let him speak and then call the question.
So, you know what else I do, guys? I read the procedural bylaws. I read the Roberts rules. I learn what's allowed and how you're allowed to speak in a meeting. And like, so when someone has the floor, when this red light is on, no one else is allowed to talk, like, other than for three reasons. And, you know, these are things that I do in my free time and stuff that we do get paid for. But I had another point about the budget, and I'm going to talk about it later. And I appreciate that the other councillors, the group of three, what you're going to see tonight, that they won't grandstand, and they won't point fingers at Dave Sharp standing here. I'm an honest resident in this town. I'm doing the best that I can for the people here. We have a complicated and complex budget and a complicated and complex job to do for you. And it's, trust me, it's a lot of work. And we're doing the best, I'm doing the best that I can. Shame on you.
Thank you. Before we call the question, I just want to speak a little bit on this myself. I think the mayor is probably in a little bit different position. It's, the mayor, it's considered a part-time job in Grinsby. But in 2019, I put in a lot of hours, a lot of meetings. We had, just our regular meetings alone, we had 69 meetings. Then committees. As the mayor, I'm on every standing committee. I try to attend a lot of them. And I attend functions. And I attend, I'm also a regional councillor. So my business has suffered by being mayor. And I accept that. And I put the time in. And I put the time in as essentially a full-time mayor. A 20% pay cut, do I work 20% less? Put 20% more into my business? That's a question that I have to ask myself before I vote tonight. I feel, and this is my own opinion, and most of the time, I am fairly quiet, and I don't speak up. But I do, I'm lifelong resident of Grinsby, and I have extreme passion for our town. I love our town. But taking a 20% pay cut, I just feel that I won't be able to give my 100%. So I will personally vote against it. I don't really, it doesn't matter to me who else votes, but I'm here 100% of the time for the town, and I will put the time in. So I'll read the resolution. Moved by Council Frank, seconded by Council Vardy, resolve that Resolution C 20-63 of the Budget Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of February 18th, 2020 be amended to read. Next page. Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's already, a recorded vote's been called for. Whereas the proposed 2020 budget submission, pre-approved by council on the 18th of February 2020, represents a 16.7% increase to the town. So a good gesture of council's commitment to the taxpayers of Grinsby, council, they should agree to a similar or bigger percentage cut in salary. And whereas the mayor and council elected by the taxpayers of Grinsby are fiscally and morally accountable to consider all aspects of the budgetary issues and concerns for our electorate, based on our fiduciary duty and also based on numerous requests from Grinsby residents, business owners, and taxpayers pleading for a concentrated effort by council to reduce the budgetary and tax levy. And whereas the mayor and council are responsible to ensure the taxpayers are offered a fair, reasonable, equitable, and affordable budget and tax levy for all the members of the community at all income levels, and it is very responsible and prudent for council to offer a 16% to 20% cut in salaries, which will be factored into the budget. Therefore, be it resolved that currently the total budget cost of council salary is circa $220,000, which represents about 2% of the town's portion and about 50% of the tax levy, that all of council take a 20% pay cut, which represents about $44,000 and about 0.30% of town portion and 0.1% of tax levy. Recorded vote was requested. Council Bothwell?
I just want to say, I want to see us reduce the tax levy for everyone. This might be a token gesture by a yea, but I want to see us do what's best for the whole community as well out of this decision-making process. So I'm a yea.
All right. Council Dunstall?
Nay.
Council Frank?
Yea.
Council Cadwell?
Nay.
Council Ritchie?
Nay.
Council Sharp?
Nay.
Council Vane?
Nay.
Council Vardy?
Yea.
And myself, I'm a nay. So that is defeated. Are there any other motions on the budget to be lifted? Council Dunstall?
Thank you, Your Worship. I sent a few to, oh...
I know there's more. I'm just calling it. If you want to go on the next one, that's good.
Could I?
So C 20-65, the infrastructure levy?
Sure. But, yeah.
That was requested by both you and Council Frank. That's, yeah, we're going to try to go through in order.
I think that is the right order, is. Yeah, I didn't bring up the hospital. I think that was after the base budget. So, yeah, the infrastructure, yeah. And what I'm hoping is staff can speak on some of these things, too. I want to hear, so the public is aware of what these amounts are for. Thank you.
Sorry. Moved by Council Dunstall, seconded by Council Frank, resolve that Resolution Number C 20-65 be lifted from Budget Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of February 18th, 2020 for separate consideration. All in favor? That's carried. Stephen and C.A. O'Hara, you'd like to comment on the infrastructure?
So the town has approximately $630 million in assets, and that represents everything from our linear infrastructure, from roads, from waters, water mains, sewer mains, facilities. So $630 million. And I'll provide a little graph here that shows the gap that we currently have. So right now, we have a gap of $4.8 million. In 10 years, that gap will rise to $5.7 million. And in 25 years, the gap will raise to $64 million. If the town does nothing, that gap will rise to $64 million in 25 years. If the town implements a 1% infrastructure levy, you can see that the gap starts to close down to about $40 million, and that's represented by the orange line, the middle line. And if the town were to implement a 2% infrastructure levy, we would actually really start to close the infrastructure gap. And that would come down to about $10 million.
Thank you, Stephen. Questions? Council Ritchie?
Thank you, through the mayor. So just a question. With the reading that I've done, are we not mandated by the province now to do an asset management plan, which would include our infrastructure, which is basically a 10-year plan? Or it would be like what you have to do in the next 10 years? So that's the first question I have.
Yes, we are. The province has mandated that all municipalities prepare an asset management plan to close our infrastructure gap.
Thank you. So then the next thing that I, that when looking at this chart, it appears to me that we're not even putting enough money into the infrastructure. And I understand with responsibility that we have to be responsible to the taxpayers, that even in 10 years, if we increase the levy by 1%, we're still going to be $5.7 million short. Is that correct?
That's right.
Council Vane?
In regards to the infrastructure, the, I think as Council Ritchie just pointed out, we're already short, and we're going to continue to be short. I think somebody said to me the other day, the best way of putting this is, look at Detroit. I remember crossing the border one time, going to Detroit, and had to pull my car out of a pothole almost, it was that big. So I think this is a very responsible thing to do. I get nobody wants to spend the money, that's very clear tonight. I have one person out of everybody who emailed me say, bring in 0%. On number support, a 0% because the town's got to move forward. And I understand completely that everybody here is afraid of the big numbers and eating into our money and all that. And I'm not unsympathetic to that. As I said to one young lady today on the email, I was a struggling father at one point, trying to raise two kids in a farm and a house. So I get all this. So don't think I'm wrong, I'm being angry at anybody. I'm not. I'm not mad at the newspapers either, by the way. I'm just saying that the headline threw it off. But the point being is, we've got to start funding stuff. If you don't want to fund it now, it's going to go down to our kids and our grandkids. And I'm not going to do that to my kids and my grandkids. I love this town. I moved here because we love this town. I would like to spend the rest of my life here, but I also want to enjoy it. So we've got to pay for that. Thank you.
We have Council Frank, then Council Bothwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our, this 10-year plan that's been addicted to us. Does that plan say we have to put money into this levy every year? Or can we start at any point within those 10 years? Or how would that graph look if we started next year?
If we started next year, it wouldn't make a really big difference. As you can see, the infrastructure levy really climbs out in 25 years. So deferring it for a year, no, it won't have a major impact. As you can see, the curve is actually declining a bit in the initial years. So, yes, a deferral of one year will not have a major impact on this. What it is, the most important thing is recognizing that the town's infrastructure will begin to age. And as it ages, it'll have to be replaced. It's no different than the roof on your house. You can buy a brand-new home and have a brand-new roof on the house, and in 15 years, if you have 15-year shingles, you're going to have to replace the roof in 15 years. You can pay for it all upfront in 15 years, or you can put money away each year so you have the money in 15 years to replace the roof. It's no different than municipal infrastructure. It's expensive. As you can see, it's $630 million of infrastructure. And unless we start putting money away for the eventual replacement of these assets, we are going, it's all going to come due in one year. And the impact on the tax bill will be huge. Or we'll have to incur debt to pay for it. So we can, we can pay slowly over time to build up reserves. We can replace it when it comes due. Or we can pay as you go at the time, which could see our debt levels increase substantially.
Okay, follow-up question and then Council Bothwell?
What's our infrastructure? What's the status of our infrastructure right now? I mean, is it, is it good, bad, excellent? I mean, is this going to kill us if we put this to next year and not this year? I mean, we're looking at this budget kind of forensically here, so I just want to make sure that we're doing the right things. Because I think if we can put this out by one year and not get ourselves into trouble in the 25-year lineup there, then maybe that's what we should be considering doing.
Our infrastructure is in a fairly good state. You know, you can look, you can look at our roads. There aren't many potholes in the roads. It's going out over the next number of years, where a lot of these, say, back in the 80s, when a lot of these subdivisions were put in, that infrastructure's going to start to come due, the roads, the water, the sewer mains. And it's, that's why you see the curve going up out in 60, 65 years, where it really, where that replacement is going to hit us. But if we wait to put the money away, that will have a big financial burden on the town. So if we start now by putting money away, we'll have the money in place to pay for that infrastructure. Right now, say for water mains, we're replacing all the cast-iron water mains, which have basically come to the end of their useful life. So I believe we, capital budget for replacement of cast-iron water mains, that's over $1 million a year. It's expensive. It's an expensive infrastructure. Our facilities, I would say our facilities probably right now probably are in the worst state in terms of infrastructure. A lot of them are aging. We have some new facilities, like here, like the town hall. Even the Peach King Center is starting to get old. We, you know, I always, sometimes I refer to the library art gallery as a new building. Well, it's not new anymore. It was built in 2004. That's 16 years old now, and it's starting to require maintenance and upkeep. So, again, these things are expensive, and we need to really start looking at setting money aside for maintenance and eventual replacement.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephen. Council Bothwell?
I don't remember how long ago. It was in the last year or two. I thought that, and I'm thinking water, wastewater, stormwater, that there was a large grant that we received that was more generous from federal provincial government than we expected. And as a result, they were able to advance a number of capital projects in the one year that were planned for further ahead. So we kind of got a windfall, and we were able to complete a number of projects ahead of time. So those types of things were, you know, I guess we are at the beck and call of that funding mechanism. But when we have that opportunity, I think it kind of gave us a little jump of a head start. So I'm with Council Frank on this, that I think that we were able to get ahead of the eight ball a year ago, I think, with some of those, that, those infrastructure needs. And perhaps we can defer for a year for this one.
Thank you, Council Bothwell. We have Council Sharp, then Council Cadwell?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. This, to me, is good financial planning, putting a little bit away each year for our infrastructure. Just to remind council, we have a major water main project that it probably, well, I think it's going to be slated... it's going to be slated for two thousand and twenty-two. There are two water mains going down our main street, from approximately Christie Street to Elm Street. I'm sure the fire chief can help me on this one, as a former water foreman, but those water mains were put in in nineteen fifty-five, and they are to six inch and a four inch. They need replacement, so, because our staff was out there at least a half a dozen times repairing holes in that water main. Again, this water is our drinking water. So again, this investment is also that we have good drinking water, too. So I think it's a very smart financial planning to put a little bit of money each, away each year, and hopefully, with the good work of staff and council, when we go to AMO, we go to Roma, different conferences, we go, we put in a delegation, and we're able to secure some, some funding grants from the, from the province. So I, I'm supporting this a hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Counsel Sharp, and then Counsel Bane.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. So there's a theme that's coming up here, and as I said, I spend a lot of time thinking about these budgets, and, and I actually work with numbers in, in my professional life, but I, so what I've noticed, like I said, I've been coming to council for two years before I was even on council, this would be my, it's been three years I've been sitting at these, I was sitting on your side two years ago, and sitting at the committee of the whole. And so what I notice is that, two years ago, we came, staff came with a thirty percent budget increase, proposed, right? And then the previous council brought it down to four point six percent or something, right? They deferred things. And then, and then last year, staff comes with a twenty-eight percent budget increase. It's mostly those items that were deferred from the year before. And so we brought it down to nine point six percent or something, right? And we, because there's things, all these things-
Eight point seven five.
Eight point seven five, sorry. My memory only does so well, but, so then we brought it down, and then, then this year, we get an eighteen point five percent proposed budget increase. And it's a lot of these items, and the items that are on there, they're not things that you don't want, residents, these are things that residents have asked for and keep asking for. And so, so we keep bringing them back. And then, so, so last year was twenty-eight percent, we, and the year before was thirty percent, and like, we're just pushing this forwards and forwards and forwards. And then what makes it confusing, and where my thought process came from this, is that if we can, if these are things that the residents truly want, and we can get them out of the way, and then we can focus each year on the one or two new items, right? The arena, if we get that grant for seventy-five percent of an expansion to the arena, this is a thing that we're going to want to pay for. But if we already have, you know, sixteen percent of last year's stuff that we didn't do on the docket, and then, so like, if there's a, there's a school of thought that says, if we want these things, we should complete them, and then focus only on what we're going to add in the future? And the opposite side of that is, if we don't want them, we need to remove them from the budget completely, all right? And not defer them to next year. So if we're not, if, if we don't want to do this one percent budget increase, and I'm not saying this whole spiel to this one item, but if, but if we don't want transit, right? It's not, well, let's do transit next year, it's, it's, let's not do it, all right? If there's things that, that are not required, if, if we are not going to do it for our residents, we don't make these things up. If the residents ask for it, and we have decided, no, then, then let's just take them out. Let's not defer until next year. And, and if it's worth doing, let's, let's do it, all right? It's a hundred and seventy-two dollars increase to the average home. Sorry for the long rant, but this one, I think, is important because you can see on the chart, like eventually it's millions of dollars that we have to borrow.
Counsel Bane?
I just, I'm going to actually ask Director Sweeney to step up in a moment. Sorry, Sarah, to put you on the spot. Director Sweeney's responsible for facilities as part of her portfolio, so I'm just going to mention a couple of quick things. I totally agree with what Counsel Sharp said. The library, part of their heating, is Catherine here? Hi Catherine, no, you can't hide, I can see you. They, I spoke with Catherine recently, I sit on the library board, and one of the things she told me is she doesn't turn on some of the heaters in the library because they're electric, and to keep costs down. The library also had a problem with its roof. The Livingston Activity Center is in need of a lot of attention. A lot of the buildings down by the water need attention. Actually, we used to have Gamru, who is very predominantly involved in saving people's lives on the water, we used to give them a shed down by the water, which got flooded out for three years, it's now full of mold and it can't be used anymore, so we have to get rid of it. We don't have enough facilities, but as I believe Mr. Gruninger said, the, the places are in rough shape. Just take a walk over to the Peach King Center, take a walk to any of our buildings, you're going to see that we need this money. So as Counsel Sharp said, if you look at the chart, eventually, we're going to have to pay for this. We may as well start putting a couple of bucks away now. I know Counsel Gruninger, or Counsel, sorry, Stephen, I apologize, Mr. Gruninger, our town treasurer, yes, the backbone of our finance, he spoke about the, the water mains. Well, the water mains that are being replaced are actually on a twenty-five-year plan. So we can talk about getting extra money and doing stuff and speeding it up and that, but those water mains are out of date, they need to be replaced. We still have another ten years to go. So I, I do fully support this, and I will support it when it comes up. Thank you.
Counsel Bothwell?
Sarah, I'm gonna, gonna quote, found an email from the Director of Public Works. The town has submitted an application for a grant under the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program, the Green Stream two thousand and nineteen intake, and that has to be related specifically to drinking water distribution, wastewater, stormwater, and the project must be replacement or rehabilitation of an existing system. Project must conform to the town's asset management plan with a max cost of three million. Based on the grant's strict requirements, we evaluated that the two thousand and twenty-two downtown Main Street and Elm Street water down replacement project at two point six two million is the best option for this grant application. And the funding intake is very competitive, and should our application be approved, then the federal provincial share to the town would be one point nine million, seventy-three percent, with the town funding the remaining six hundred and ninety-eight thousand from our water reserve, and we should hear back from March if we're successful. So there's been a lot of action by staff to try to, we've got plans in place, we've got a budget that, that does handle some of those immediate infrastructure needs. Hundred and twenty-five thousand in this, this budget for this year isn't going to, isn't going to stop something from happening that should have been happening. And I think that there's a lot of grant opportunities and other things in the works that are going to help us mitigate the slide up there. So I, I, I still feel that we can postpone this one twenty-five this year, just because we have another, a number of other balls in the way that are, that are going to help us along as well.
Counsel Ritchie?
Thank you, to the mayor. Just wanted to ask staff if grants are guaranteed money?
No, grants aren't guaranteed money. We have to apply for a grant, and only if we're accepted for the grant will we actually get funds. We found, we found that over the last number of years that there's been a number of grants where we haven't been approved for, because sometimes Grimsby's looked at as an affluent community, and they, sometimes grants are given to smaller communities that don't have as much. So we've, we've had trouble obtaining grants in the past from the province.
Thank you, Stephen. Any further questions? I just have one comment on the infrastructure. I see, reading the graph, it is something that we have the opportunity to mitigate this year's tax increase by forwarding this and deferring it to a subsequent year, but it's something that we are going to have to put some money away eventually. But I think this year, I would vote to defer it, certainly. So Counsel Dunstall, how are you going to word your motion? Seeing no further questions?
That's a good question. I get to word it, eh? So I'd like to move that we defer it or approve it? Is, is, is that enough? Yeah?
You have, you have to choose either-
I have to choose. I, I can't, I thought we all-
Counsel Sharp? Point of order.
Sorry to interrupt you, John. So, so currently, we've lifted a motion, and then we can approve the motion as it was written, or we can amend the motion to say something else. So the motion currently was, whether we approve this, so, so we are, so now we would vote on the motion to approve this, and if it's defeated, then it's not approved. We don't need to amend it to, to defer it.
Correct. Counsel Sharp.
Per procedure, thanks.
Go ahead, John.
So do I need to say anything? No.
Well, do what you want to, leave the motion as it is.
Leave it as it is, yes, yes. Let's just vote on it.
Thank you, Counsel Sharp. Counsel Frank has asked for a recorded vote. Counsel Sharp, you okay to be the second on this?
Sorry, may I explain?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read the motion.
Thank you very much.
Moved by Counsel Dunstall, seconded by Counsel Sharp. Resolve that Resolution C twenty dash sixty-five of the Budget Committee of the whole meeting minutes of February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty remain as recommended. Yeah. And a recorded vote has been called for. Counsel Bothwell?
Nay.
Counsel Dunstall?
Nay.
Ah, sorry. Counsel Frank?
Nay.
Counsel Cadwell?
Yea, in favor.
Counsel Ritchie?
Yea.
Counsel Sharp?
Yea.
Counsel Bane?
Yea.
Counsel Vardy?
Nay.
And I am a nay, so this is defeated? Up next, we have report, or line item C twenty dash sixty-six, or sorry, no, there's nothing on there, C twenty dash sixty-seven, Communications, Counsel Dunstall or Counsel Frank? Counsel Frank, maybe. Counsel Dunstall had the last time, so Counsel Frank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel that this is another area where we can probably defer-
Yeah, we have to vote on it first, so we'll just get it on the table. So moved by Counsel Frank, seconded by Counsel Dunstall. Sorry. And the, the resolution, moved by Counsel Frank, seconded by Counsel Dunstall. Resolve that Resolution C dash twenty dash sixty-seven be lifted from the Budget Committee of the whole meeting minutes of February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty for separate consideration. All in favor? That's carried. Now Counsel Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We haven't had a communications officer for, well, I think we had one there last year, year before last, who actually didn't find a lot of work in this municipality, ended up going back to the region. I think this is an area, this one here, which is a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty, could be either deferred or delayed until next year. I don't think it's the most important thing in the world, we have a communications officer right now, so I'd like to suggest that we delay it till later in the year or defer it to next year. Thank you.
Counsel Dunstall?
I would like to consider delaying it till later in the year, say halfway through the year, so July, so that we divert fifty percent of the salary.
CIO, you'd like to comment on that?
Yeah, if I, if I could, you know, beyond marketing our community in a common brand that we haven't had in the town of Grimsby, we've got various types of branding out there, and really demonstrating our value proposition, not only to the community, but to the province, to the nation. I really feel this is a valuable resource. The three main things that I think will really help with the communication officer is the public engagement. We need a much broader public engagement as we work through our developments, what we want this community to look like ten, twenty years from now, and we have not been doing proper community engagement. We've made a best effort, but this is an opportunity to bring someone in that you really hear the voice of all the residents of Grimsby. The other big thing that I think even came up today was the government relations component, to find funding opportunities. Like, we're making best efforts, we're getting bulletins from the province, from the feds, we're driving them as much as we can. But having had one before, they're monitoring these grant opportunities daily, they're helping the operations departments find money. And actually, I feel this communication officer will pay back a return on impact in the first year that they're on board. The third thing is, we're not, we don't have a public information officer in emergency situations, we're doing it all in the corners of our desks, Director Sweeney's doing it. We really, you know, those three facets alone really provide a great impact to this community. And by marketing the community better, that helps with our businesses, it helps with our value proposition. My fear of going a half a year, then you start with a bogey again in starting two thousand and twenty-one. You start with sort of a, a bogey cost, you know? I would compromise on that, but I don't feel it benefits you that much. I feel this resource is absolutely critical to help us with funding opportunities. Having had communications before, we've, we've received millions of dollars in grants, and we, we need to be on top of these daily, and we need to meet with deputy ministers, assistant deputy ministers, and this is the type of resource that helps, helps us with that. And we saw that success with the MTO, Counsel Cadwell. This has to happen all the time. It's not just nice to have.
Thank you. Counsel Sharp?
My question is, through the mayor and to the CIO, is what about not full-time? What about a, a contract position? So like, if, because I know that there's been some talk about, and the municipalities have a communications officer, apply for these grants, and they bring back a million dollars' worth of funding to the town, but if that's not the case, we're on the hook for, for a full-time employee, and is there an opportunity for, I mean, maybe it has to be a, a two-year contract to, to draw more of the better talent, but is there an opportunity for, for a contract position?
Thank you, Mayor, to the counsel. I actually, when I started to think about this, I approached the town of Lincoln for a shared service, because really, you need top talent to this job. They have one of the best communications persons in the region, a full-time communications person. I said, you know, if I give you a fifty K, will you give me a half of her time? And of course, they said, no. They've got about two point five people helping with communications, and most of them, the council wants more service. So I think when you look at contract resources and communications, they're extremely expensive, extremely expensive. And the nice thing about a full-time position, and we'll probably get it at a good rate.
Just to clarify, I wouldn't mean contracting individual services, I meant a one- or two-year contract for an employee, not a full-time employee.
Again, through you, we're trying to attract the, the top talent, and top talent is, everybody, even private sector companies are finding it's hard to find top talent. So if you're really looking for the best, you know, you, I would prefer full-time, but again, I understand where council's going with this, and I support any which way you go on that.
Counsel Bane?
Mr. Schlang, correct me if I'm wrong, but does the communications officer at Lincoln, have they not brought in like ten million-plus dollars in grants and stuff like that? And then I'm going to follow up when you answer that question, just a yes or no, it's fine.
Can't answer that question, I'm not sure. I know that when my previous position, you know, we were probably pulling in six, well, it was a bigger budget, you know, probably sixty million a year, but I can't guarantee that all the time. In a larger budget, it was a billion-dollar budget, so.
Just as an example, I want to follow up on that. Myself and Director Sweeney and CIO Schlang, we all have attended various meetings with political people. For example, the recent grant that we're seeking of twenty-some-odd million dollars, I think, is for the Peach King Center expansion. And, and I know Director Sweeney spends a lot of time, as does her, her supervisor, Trevor, sorry, I had to think about that for a second. They spend a lot of time looking at these, and they're just one department. I mean, I know that the Director of Treasury also looks for grants. This is a position, I, I think, this- the Director of Treasury also looks for grants. This is a position, I, I think, this is one that will more than pay for itself a million times over. So instead of us always having to come to the residents and saying, we need money for this, we need money for that, if we can get the grants at the different, we're gonna give them out anyways. And right now, for example, the province is the first step in getting the grant for the Peach King Center that we want to get, but Director Sweeney and CAO Schlang and myself, we don't have time to constantly phone up Mr. Oosterhoff's office and ask him where we are. That's a very competitive thing. At least if we had a communications officer, they could communicate more often and be involved more. I, I really am gonna support this one. This one, I think, is absolutely huge, as the other ones are. I don't have a problem with taking any of the positions that we're asking for and, and starting them later, if that'll save some money, but I definitely think we need them, especially this one.
We have Counselor Bothwell, then Counselor Cadwell.
I seem to recall, in the two thousand and nineteen budget, there was also a request for a communications officer, and I believe the amount that was requested at the time was thirty-six K. I just wanted to understand what that, and that would have been presented in March or somewhere, so I just want to understand how that thirty-six K came about. And I, I think we're looking here at an annual salary of something like ninety with monies to start a department with the budget, so that it provides for the, the department. I also support, like, it's just, to me, a full-time position, permanent. I like the, more of the idea of the contract, just so that you have a year-to-year and that you can look at whether the needs are still there.
Counselor Cadwell?
Oh, sorry.
You know, I guess there's something I'm gonna say. I'm not gonna overpromise and underdeliver. To find top talent, to really do a good job, I, I will tell you that it would be difficult in a contract role, but I respect council's decision.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. This one is really tough, especially being I'm Chair of GDAC, and we have a lot of good discussions through business retention, business incubators. I, I reached out to the other municipalities, and for me, I, there is a position that I'm definitely supporting, which would be the Economic Development Officer. I'm just thinking, maybe a timing right now. Again, I've weighed this one over for a long, long time. I know the, our neighboring municipalities, they, they, they're moving forward a lot, lot better than we are in regards to marketing, just from my own personal opinion. And I, I think, I know they, they took it one step at a time, so I'm looking at this position as a one-step-at-a-time position. So I, 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 I respect, and I, I do, I see the value, I really do. But I just think because of the, the budget this year, and I, I know their other staff that I'm definitely supporting, so yeah, just my comments right now. That's what my comments are. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cadwell. Anyone who hasn't spoken yet want to defer to the second round? All right, Counselor Sharp's up first for the second round.
So, I was, I'm gonna kind of reiterate what I've already said. I think there might be some value to this position, and I think it might, we might be able to get some return on it. And so, or sorry, with regard to Counselor Bothwell's question, I remember that the reason why that position in the two thousand and seventeen budget was, or sorry, two thousand and eighteen budget, was, nineteen budget, sorry, I'm a few years behind. It was half a year. So like we just mentioned, so they, so we start to put them in July, we, like, we approved the budget in March, we start the position in July, and then it's only half for that year, and then the following year, we have to add, and that's where the CAO said we're in a bogey position, because like, we carry fifty grand for their first half year, and then next year, we gotta add another fifty grand, because we only carried for July to December on that first year. So I wouldn't support a, a half-year budget increase, but I would like to amend it, amend this motion to approve a one-year contract for the position. I need a second.
I think we'll speak first, and then we'll see if we, once the amendment's on the floor, we'll see if, if it's successful or not. Counselor Vane?
I just wanted to actually respond to something. I'm sorry, I forgot to mention this before. Counselor Frake said our previous communications person left because there was not enough work. Actually, when I spoke to that person, it had nothing to do with that. It was more personal reasons that they left for. That, that was just what he told me.
All right. Counselor Sharp is called a point of order. He's made a motion to amend it to a contract position. Is there a second for that? Seeing no second, that motion, amendment dies. I think, who's up next? Counselor Frake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, actually, I can clarify something there. That thirty-six thousand dollars was actually for, which we paid to the region to borrow the last communications officer. And to contradict what Counselor Vane said, I've had many conversations with that person, and he did tell me that there wasn't a lot of work to do, and he eventually moved back to the region. But let's not go there, that's, that's a done deal. In the meantime, I think that the paying ninety to a hundred thousand dollars for a communications officer is a lot of money. I mean, there are CEOs and executives that don't get paid that kind of money. We're probably looking for a junior communications officer at best, a good, a good junior communications officer. And I do believe, under the circumstances of this budget, I believe we should defer this, if we're going to do it at all, to September, and maybe look at part, a part-time position. So, in the meantime, I think that is, is, I think that's a gross number, I think is way out of whack. And I, we do not need a senior executive communications officer, because that's what we're talking about here for that kind of money. So I know there are some around this table that are probably gonna say different, but I've been in the corporate world, and I know a little bit about what communications officers do and how much they're worth. So I'll leave that with you to think about, and I, I will not support this as it is. Thank you.
Counselor Ritchie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, when I look at this position, I think about the infrastructure gap, all the things that we need, that we're lacking funds in this town. And, you know what? That is one of the reasons why we want one of the best communications officers, because if they have any way to mitigate the, the money that we're going to have to spend in the future, we need it, and we need it now. And that's, that's, that's the thing they do. So when they, we've already heard that grants are very competitive. So do we want, you know, no, with grades or whatever the case is, do you want somebody who pulls a C in to put your grant information together, to present it to the provincial and federal government, or do you want somebody that is a straight-A student? And that's, that's how I look at this. And I look at it as, you want the best product out there, because it's so competitive. And if we want to bring this, these, this grant money to our town, that's what we're going to need.
Thank you, Counselor Ritchie.
Can I make a motion? Can I make a motion?
Counselor Frake, yes, you can make a motion.
Thank you, being that that's going around these days. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we hire a more junior communications officer, and to split the difference between what, what Counselor Dunstall specified, I'd like, I, I'd go June, July.
Sorry. Counselor Frake is a mover. Do we have a second for that? No second? That is defeated. Well, yeah, it's just, it's not happening. It's dead. Yes, we'll call the question, and that would be to leave it, or to leave it in the budget, a communications officer as is. Counselor Bothwell has called for a recorded vote. All right, so there's a recorded vote on the floor. Counselor Bothwell?
Nay.
Counselor Bothwell's a nay. Counselor Dunstall?
Yea.
Counselor Frake?
Nay.
Nay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Nay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yea.
Counselor Sharp?
Nay.
Counselor Vane?
Yea.
Counselor Vardy?
Nay.
And I, myself, I'm, is a nay. So that is defeated. And that was moved by Counselor Frake and seconded by Counselor Sharp. Up next, we have C twenty dash sixty-nine, legal. Counselor Dunstall?
Yeah, thank you, worship. I, I, are we going to vote first, or do we have to get it on the floor, don't we? Yeah.
Yeah, we have to vote to list it, lift it. All right. Moved by Counselor Dunstall, seconded by Counselor Frake is on there. Resolve that Resolution C twenty dash sixty-nine be lifted from the Budget Committee of the whole meeting minutes of February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty for separate consideration. All in favor? That's lifted. It's carried. Counselor Dunstall, you'd like to speak on it first?
Sure, sure. I, I, our, our legal is one fifty now, and we're, one hundred, and we're going to three fifty, is it, altogether? We have a budget of one hundred thousand, right? And we're gonna increase it to three fifty? Legal? Yeah. And I'm just wondering if we could somehow reduce it, or, I know I've talked about this before, and I've had residents talk to me and say, you know, it's a one-time expense, why are we putting it on the levy? Why can't we take it from reserves? So I'd like us to speak on it. Thank you. Staff?
Counselor Sharp?
Thanks, Mayor Jordan. So one of the things, when I've been, I've been going to planning meetings for a long time, and one of the things I've always said is that the past council and councils of the past, we always said like, oh, if we go to the OMB, we'll lose, all right? And most of the developments that a lot of residents spoke against, we didn't, like, we didn't go to the OMB, we approved them. They never forced our hand. And so, aside from when Counselor Bothwell, currently was not a counselor, took the LJM fifteen-story, but aside from that, the councils approved all the six and eight and ten and nine-story buildings that are coming in. And they did it for fear of that there would be cost if we go to the OMB. And so, so I said, before I was even campaigning, I said that I think that, that some of the residents would be willing to, to pay to stand up for what we really want in our town. And I think that it's worthy to have some money to, when these developers come and say, like, we want to build way over twice what's allowed in height, and like, twice what's allowed in density, and reduce the parking, and change our rules to so much of an extent that it's not even looking like Grimsby anymore. And I, and I thought, the, the residents were, were on, were with me when I said, we, we really need to, we need to, to fight this fight. And I think, even since we put this in the proposed budget, I think that some of the developers, one of them called me at work in my day job, and he said, you know, you guys really shouldn't put that, they're, they're thinking, hey, these guys are gonna stand up to us, right? And they don't want that. They're like, can you please take that out? What do you need money in? And it's because they know that that money's gonna be used to stand up to them. And, and they know that if we don't have money there, that we're gonna back out. We're gonna say, ah, it's gonna come. It's gonna come, every decision comes to this table. Some of them are done by staff, but, and then they come and they say, what do you guys want to do? And we weigh it. We go into closed session. We say, okay, what's gonna happen? What's our legal? We get a lawyer in here. And, and he says, like, this is your chances, this is what's going on. And, and sometimes, in the past, and I don't want to see this too much in the future, of us just saying, it's not worth standing up for what we really want. And I, I would consider, maybe we can reduce it. Maybe we can, but I think already that some of these developers are, are thinking, wow, these guys are not gonna just lay down and take it. And I think that was something that the residents were willing. And this amount, if we spend less, it, it's just money that we have in the bank, right? And we can reduce it in the next year's budget if we find we're not, we don't need this money, because the developers have, have realized Grimsby doesn't lay down. And so, maybe we can reduce it. I'd let someone else make the motion.
Counselor Vane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. If I'm not mistaken, I believe last year, we budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for legal and spent four fifty. Is that correct?
Yeah, it was just under half a million dollars, four hundred and ninety.
Okay, so four hundred and ninety thousand, and we spent a hundred now. What Counselor Sharp just said is very true. I'll guarantee you, pretty much every resident, or almost every resident that we spoke to when we're campaigning, said, stop this out-of-control development. Fine. But to do that, we've got to be able to stand up to them. If we don't have the money, we can't stand up to them. Now, one of the comments made was, reduce it from adding the two fifty, which would take it down from three fifty, and we already spent five hundred this year. The other option is take it from the reserves. Well, the reserves have nothing left. Like, people look at our, you know, we have this money in different reserve accounts, but the government has got very, very strict requirements. This money can only go to buildings. This money can only go to this. This money can only go to that. Legal has nothing. Legal has zero. So if we don't add this two fifty, I still, honestly, based on what's before us, I have a funny feeling we're going to need more than the two fifty. I was also approached, I was in Town Hall one day, and I was approached by a developer, and these developers know us all, because they come into town all the time. They're always talking to us. And this particular developer said the same thing to me that one said to Counselor Sharp, you don't need that. Why waste the money? I'm a business owner here. I'm gonna pay more taxes for it. Well, if we don't have it, we can't fight them. So if you don't want twenty-story buildings as your neighbor, then we're gonna have to stand up once in a while. We've taken that commitment very seriously here. So I really think we need that money. All right?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Cadwell?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to clarify a comment made by Counselor Vane. Currently, we have about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the legal reserve, but those funds will be going to fund the deficit from two thousand and nineteen, and it's still not even enough. So I just wanted to clarify.
Counselor Cadwell, then Counselor Frake?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. And I do support this, this initiative that we do put money into our, our legal. Again, I'm not gonna harp on all the comments that are, that have been positive comments to this, because the reality is, there, there's the risk and the chance, that strong chance, that we're gonna be challenged a lot more, a lot more in the future. And I think this is a good recommendation by staff. Thank you.
Counselor Frake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I suppose this one item on the budget is like asking the question, how far is up? You don't know, don't know where it'll go. I do have confidence in our new legal counsel, Mr. Schlang, Stephen, that they will do us well, and they will get our legal cost in order, and we won't be paying out as much this year as last year. But then again, it's how far is up? We don't know what type of legal challenges we're gonna have. I was looking forward to suggesting we knock fifty grand off the two fifty, but I hear now we want to put a hundred thousand on top of that. Is that correct? And that's because of the deficit we're carrying forward. Is that correct? Okay, I just want to clarify that. Anyways, I was gonna suggest we go for two hundred thousand dollars, and hopefully that our new counsel would be very efficient, very effective. that our new council would be very efficient, very effective, and be able to get a lot of things done more, more cost-effectively. So anyway, just my comments. Thank you.
Any further comment on this?
I do have a comment. In the past, legal fees were, were never, legal department was never itemized in a separate legal department. It was often in different departments, whether it was in public works, whether it was in planning. And it was very difficult as a private citizen to find out actually what the town had spent on legal fees over the past several years. I think that putting our legal fees up front and making them transparent and, and so the general public can look up and actually see what our legal fees are. Because to this day, I still don't know what our legal fees were in two thousand and ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. I haven't found it. It's, there's legal fees in one department, another department. And I certainly know in two thousand and fifteen, there were laws. Speak from experience. Any further questions? No, I'll read the resolution. Moved by Counselor Frake, seconded by Counselor Dunstall. Resolve that Resolution C twenty dash sixty-nine of the Budget Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes of February eighteenth, twenty twenty remain as recommended. And that's a recorded vote. Counselor Bothwell?
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Counselor Frake?
Under the circumstances, I'll go yay. Thanks.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vardy?
Okay. I think Counselor Vardy is sick. I can't vote for her, her, but I'm going to say yay as well so that this has passed. It's carried.
All right. Up next, economic development. And where are we here? That was brought up by Counselor Dunstall and Counselor Frake. We're going to move to lift it. Moved by Counselor Dunstall, seconded by Counselor Frake. Resolve that Resolution C twenty dash sixty-eight be lifted from Budget Committee of the Whole Meetings Minutes of February eighteenth, twenty twenty for separate consideration. All in favor? That's carried, that's lifted. Discussion? Counselor Vane?
A big part of tonight that I've heard loud and clear from a lot of people, as we all have, is that people don't want to have this, big increases, which I agree, I'm a taxpayer here too, as we all are. The one way that we can help reduce that is by having an economic development officer because what we pay in taxes, many people say to me, or have, and I'm sure they've said it to a lot of us, is that we have all this building going on, why aren't our taxes going down if we have all these buildings and these new houses coming in? Because they don't pay for themselves. What pays a bigger portion of your taxes is industry and business. They pay three times what we do and they use less services than we do. So we need to get more business, more industry. We need to promote the businesses and the industries that we have. We need to encourage some of them to grow if they can, if they will. We need to bring new businesses to town. We need to attract it. We, as a council and we as a staff, are already pushed to the limit. I, I believe when we were having an earlier discussion, Counselor Sharp talked about putting in twenty, thirty hours a week. Well, last year alone, I know some of us did over almost two hundred functions, meetings or whatever else. So it's not like we have all this extra time, we can just go sit around and go visit all these people. We need a professional. They've proven in other towns, some small towns actually have two economic development officers. This is something we're long overdue for, so I will be supporting this one.
Counselor Bothwell?
Perhaps the C O can help clarify for me. I think the salary for this position is something like seventy or something like that, or seventy-five. And then there was a lot of talk about this person being our champion over in China or somewhere and doing travel with the region of Niagara. And I think I saw in the budget seventeen thousand five hundred for conferences and travel for this position. If you could please clarify that?
Through you, as one economic development officer, the salary would be higher. This is, this is prorated to, I think, a February or March start date. The salary for the ec dev officer would be higher than that. It's probably just over a hundred and two or so because we're looking for, if you only have one, they have to represent us with CEOs. There's twenty-five hundred businesses in Grimsby. And, you know, to go see them, you can't just make appointments. They need to show a value proposition to the businesses that they're going to visit. They need to be linked into the region for Team Niagara. So as far as that goes, the only foreign direct investment, most business expansion comes from existing businesses. Ninety percent of business expansion comes from existing businesses. We have twenty-five hundred businesses. So most of the time in the, in the first year, they'd be spent on business retention and expansion. Once we start to develop an economic strategy, maybe there's some economic clusters where the region does go do foreign direct investment. They go to other parts of the world to try and promote Niagara. For the right type of visits, you know, I would promote that once in a while this individual would go. The other thing is they should be spending most of their time outside of the office. They got to be networking, meeting with the Chamber of Commerce of, of Ontario, getting connections, putting Grimsby on the map. So yes, to really fund that office properly and really drive the initiatives of that economic development officer, it is about getting out there, developing relationships, maybe sometimes going the odd visit internationally to promote Grimsby businesses. And that's, that's why that's there.
Thank you. Counselor Cadwell?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I will be strongly supporting this, for an economic development officer. It's long overdue. It really is. I know there was times that we could use the services from the region, but in my time on council, I just, and the region has been great to, to look to because we have a, at our G D A C committee, we have a fantastic representative from the region that sits in all our G D A C meetings and that. And it's, it's so important that, when we started our G D A C group this year, one of the first things we did is we asked Mr. Basic just to do a, a land, bit of a land survey, vacant land survey, what, what lands would be, you know, maybe available, not, you know, not, not through, we weren't, you know, dealing with ownerships of lands, but how many, what lands would be available for economic development? I believe it was around eleven, I think. And I've been in town for a long, long time and those lands right now are still vacant. So here's an opportunity for, for Grimsby to, to get out there and, and really showcase, get out, speak to the, speak to the businesses and that. And it, it's, I, again, I, I can go on and on, but I think this is the right time and about time to have an E D O. Thank you.
Counselor Dunstall?
Thank you, through you too. I guess to our town manager, he says we have twenty-five hundred businesses. And one thing that I know that we've always struggled with over the years, and I sat on G D A C for a couple of terms, is actually knowing who we have as businesses in this town. We know some of the larger businesses, but we don't know all the smaller businesses. And it's always been in the back of my mind, so I'm going to bring it out right now, is that is, why don't we have some kind of a business registry and a business license in our town that's nominal, that helps offset the cost of having an economic development manager? So it kind of pays for itself and it doesn't go on the levy. Is that a crazy idea or can, can somebody help me out here? Mr. Slange?
To the C O?
Yeah.
I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver. You know, if we, we don't have, we don't have a business license system, we're looking at it, but it probably wouldn't pay for the economic development officer. That'd probably take some time, but, so I, I just don't want to give you some misinformation there.
Could it be something we could grow into over time?
Through you, we actually are looking at business licenses and perhaps it could bring in some revenue, but there's also offsetting costs as well with that, some of our other staff, not just ec dev staff.
We have dog licenses, why don't we have business licenses, you know? It helps offset the cost.
Counselor Frake? And then?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you all know, I supported economic development officer. I think that we do have an opportunity in town to develop more economic opportunities, no question about that. Maybe the time is right. I'm just wondering if the time is right in relation to the budget. So I'm still struggling with whether we should move ahead with this this year or later this year. This position for a full-time year, I take it, Mr. Slange, is going to be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars? I'm just guessing because this, this is a June hire, is that right?
Yeah, we're, we're targeting June. Hopefully, we could do it a little early, but yeah, it's about a hundred and fifty annual labor rate.
So once again, I, I ask the question, do we want to start off with the top most recognized, most reputable economic development officer in the world? Because a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a pretty good salary for an economic development officer. I'm just wondering if there's somewhere in there where we can look a little, maybe at the junior level again or the medium level again? Because that is a lot of money. And I, believe me, like, I, I'm, I'm all for economic development, no question, you all know that. I'm just wondering if we can delay this or maybe look at hiring someone that's not as high-level, an executive, because this sounds like an executive position to me. Thank you.
Mayor, I want to be clear that it's not a hundred and fifty thousand salary. It's, you know, as you know, salary makes up of total compensation with twenty-eight percent benefits. And as Counselor Bothwell brought up, it's really getting that connection of those conferences, making sure that, so we actually, when we looked at the one fifty, we wanted to create the office that they have the ability to go and network and do things. So we wanted to come up with a realistic cost for the entire office. And again, you know, we need to, we need to get going on this. So the town Lincoln has someone, we're trying to sort of marry that same sort of job role. It isn't a top executive. I had one. That was Mr. Sagan, and, and you're, you're making a lot more than that. You're up at the two hundred range for top. So the salary would be about the one oh seven range.
Thank you. Any further first comments? Counselor Bothwell?
Sorry, thank you again, Mayor. I just, again, I support economic development as well. I just think that we've now moved to a new structure where G D A C reports directly through the C O to council. And I think that there's a work plan they're working on, some initiatives they're looking at getting themselves aligned with. There's some, they've made some good partnerships, and I mean, the region and the St. Catherine's workplace, there's a couple of different connections with regards to economic development within the region that will help guide that, I think, as they formulate that moving forward. I think that this is something that we could, because of the, the pressures that we're facing this year, wait and see how that evolves and develops, and I'd like to see that for next year.
Any further questions? Counselor Dunstall?
Yeah, I could just add, I, I think we've had that wait and see approach for, for many, many years. I, I've, I know when we had our consultant come in, G D A C invited somebody in to do a, an economic study back in two thousand and ten, I think. Yeah, George Shriver. I think he got sick too, the poor man, when he did the, and we only paid him fifteen thousand dollars. It was, we got off very lucky for a very well-done economic plan. And in it, we really could see opportunities, but if we don't have the person at the front of the bus, driving the bus, we're going to miss a lot of opportunities. And G D A C is a great group. There's got a lot of good people on it, but it meets once a month. They have a two-hour meeting. You can't get out there and knock on doors. You can't get out there and if somebody walks into this building, we need an economic development manager who can talk to that individual if he wants to open up a business here. It isn't going to happen with G D A C. They're just not here all the time. And I think we really need to step up to the plate and do it now. And putting it off another year is just putting off more opportunities for economic development in this community. And we really need it badly. We really do. Thank you.
Counsel Ritchie?
Thank you, through the mayor. I have to echo those, those comments. And one of the things that, that I look at, and being a member of G D A C is, and maybe staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the focuses that we as a council has put it on is business retention and expansion. And to hire this individual, they're going to need some time to build those relationships with the business. And if this council wants to see some benefits to this position, we can't defer to next year or the year after, or we're never going to see the benefits of, of that individual. And for that reason, I, I would like to see it included into this budget because the sooner we get going on it, the better.
Thank you, Counsel Ritchie. Seeing no further questions? There's a motion on the floor. But do you want to amend it?
Would.
All right.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Frake has an amendment?
I'd like to amend it that we hired this person in September. And maybe, again, I'm looking at the budget and thinking about wherever we can get a penny out of this budget, I think we should try.
I think we vote on this first and then we see if, if this fails or doesn't carry, is defeated, then we'll vote on, on an amendment. Yep, your recorded vote, Counsel Vane, has been noted. Moved by Counsel Frake, seconded by Counsel Dunstall. Resolve that Resolution C twenty dash sixty-eight of the Budget Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes of February eighteenth, twenty twenty remain as recommended. Counselor Bothwell?
I'm a nay only because I'm with Frake on this one. Thanks.
Counselor Dunstall?
Hey, yay.
Counselor Frake?
Nay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counsel Ritchie?
Yay.
Counsel Sharp?
Nay.
Counsel Vane?
Yay.
Counsel Vardy?
No, you. I already said you.
Nay.
And I myself am a nay. So that's defeated. And I would rather have seen it moved to September so we can, can we bring that back? Counselor Frake is putting on a motion or you, have you withdrawn that?
No, I, I won't because I, probably kill me, but I'm sorry. I think there's opportunity, I think, still think there's opportunities in this town for some economic development. And I think we should walk before we run. We're still getting our ducks in a row. It's only this year that we've, we've actually put in place our Economic Development Committee that is now only reporting into council, which is, which is a move forward. I still think that there's members of staff, senior staff and the C O. Mr. Slange, I'm sure can, can cover off a lot of these things between now and then and with the help from the region. So yes, I, I'll, I'll support a September hire if you want to go back to this particular motion and, and I'll support that, only because I'm an economic development kind of guy.
Counsel Bothwell?
I'm recommending we do a two-year term that we don't do indeterminate, we're paying this person on our payroll forever and ever and ever. If we find we don't have a need for an indeterminate, for an economic development officer down the road, we have a position that's really, really hard to go cross, cross-departmental and use those skill sets somewhere else. So I think it's renewable. I'm talking about two-year term, renewable. So if we find there's value and there's, there's, then there's, there's some push on this person to deliver because then their job's on the line. So they have to come through and in two years, if they're doing well and they're actually performing and we have objectives, then we can extend them from there. That's what we do in government. We, you don't give everyone a lifetime job forever and, and that, you give them an opportunity to prove themselves and then you can extend that term or you make them indeterminate. indeterminate after the two-year point, if you find that the values are there.
Councillor Vane?
I, I'm going to oppose that, and take the other side, that, first of all, if you're a quality person, you're not going to take a two-year contract. So, second of all, the, I have yet to see a town that has economic development officers that haven't actually either increased the department, or added other people, sorry, increased it, period. I, I think by doing anything on a contract, you're not going to get quality people. People just aren't going to apply for a position that's going to die in two years, unless it's somebody who doesn't plan on staying, and they want to move around. So, I, I will support the September start, but I will not support a contract part.
Thank you. C E O?
Yeah, Mayor, I, I think, I think, again, because we're trying to recruit some good people, I would say that if you're thinking contract, don't approve this. No, not, but, but right now, there's, there's a shortage of these kinds of skill sets, and I'm saying this needs to be full-time, or don't approve it. Because we need, if we're going to do this, we've got to do it right. We've got one chance at this with businesses. So, I'm saying that to attract top talent, it has to be full-time, or don't do it at all.